I would like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I certainly want to welcome everybody here in attendance tonight and our special guests, which we'll be introduced to in just a moment. I want to also welcome all our viewers on television. And in keeping up, you know, our global studies program continues to expand and we're all so proud of it. And we have a group tonight. Dr. Campbell is going to introduce us.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sorenson. I feel like I'm all by myself over here.
Yes.
But it's great to have so many people here this evening. Thanks for all for being here. So as Dr. Sorenson said, we've really created a number of partnerships over the past few years. Most recently, our new partnership with Collegio San Carlo in Milan, Italy. And this evening, we're very excited to introduce our middle school partnership. So I'm going to ask if Mr. Powers can come forward and also Ms. Costanza-Brevini is the lead teacher from the school. And then we'll do some introductions and hopefully have some students come up and talk about their experience briefly.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Another month, another cultural exchange, so pretty wild. So my name is Rob Powers. I'm the Plymouth Public Schools Social Studies Coordinator and I'm also co-producing this exchange with Dr. Campbell and my colleague Allison Riordan. So we had the high school students visiting from Collegio San Carlo last month for our first ever exchange with this school from Milan, Italy, focused specifically on STEM activities. And now we have 28 middle school students here this month staying with our host families here at PCIS and Plymouth South Middle School. They are accompanied by four teachers, including Costanza-Brevini here. So they have had a very, very busy itinerary. They arrived over the long weekend on Saturday. They had some family time right out of the gate, did some shadowing of their host students in their schools. And then on Friday, we did a full day in Boston on the Freedom Trail and a college tour of MIT. They also have had a STEM Bonanza experience at Plymouth South Middle School, engaging in a variety of engineering activities facilitated by our engineering teachers. Tomorrow, they'll be going to a wildlife sanctuary in Situate. They have a Zoom conference with a postdoctoral fellow from Harvard University talking about his work. There are a lot of different things on this itinerary. So I have to first and foremost give a shout out to my colleague Allison Riordan for putting together an amazing STEM itinerary for our visitors. They've also engaged in some history and cultural experiences, like we talked about, a trip to Boston on Friday. Today, they visited Pilgrim Hall Museum and were rained out of Plymouth Plantation, but we hope to go there on Thursday morning instead when the weather's a little bit nicer. They got to see what a nor'easter looks like, so that's exciting. And so it's really a joy for me as well to be able to plug these students into the cultural, rich cultural experience and history of Plymouth as well. So I will just, we have, if you want to wave, quite a few students here tonight. If you're from Italy, why don't you say hi and wave?
Please, please stand up so we can see you.
Stand up, even better.
Please stand up, all of our guests from Milan. Welcome to Plymouth. You all look so tired. Keep moving along. That's fantastic.
Yeah, it's great. They've been very busy. So I'll just turn it over to Costanza for a moment so that she can tell you a little bit about the experience they've had.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for inviting us here to witness our wonderful experience. So far, we have been welcomed like really guests of honor. We have been shown and lead and everyone was, has been very, very kind and thoughtful and caring towards us. We can't wait to return the courtesy back in Milan. Our school is not just a middle school. It's a, it covers from, it's actually a K-12, like in a broader sense, so from kindergarten up to high school. We have eight, it's very different from our, you know, from our system. So that's another, another very interesting part of our exchange that we can also, as teachers, we can involve in the differences between our organizations, the way we taught the same, the same subject. So so far has been very, very important for us and also for building new, new perspective and new thought on what we, what we do every day as a job. We, all the kids are being welcomed by wonderful families, no any kind, some of them don't want to come back. So if you have a rope, I will try to tie them and bring it back on the plane on Friday. But still, all of them were very, very happy. Some, when they, when I told the kids that we were having this meeting tonight, they asked me the permission to come because they wanted to show them their appreciation for all the work we've done, the schools have done. So I don't know if you want to hear some of your experience on firsthand?
Yes, please.
Is there anyone who would like to come up and speak? Any of the students?
Elena, Margarita.
Perhaps there's one that's not bashful.
They're like all prodding each other.
While, while Costanza's doing that, I just want to, I just want to thank the families that are here, our Plymouth families. These exchanges wouldn't be possible without the enormous support of all of you placing 28 students. As Dr. Sorenson said, there we go.
We have a volunteer.
There we go. You know, as Dr. Sorenson said, we, we have a number of partnerships here in Plymouth. And of course, you know, we couldn't do it without the teachers, our administrators. But equally important, the families that have supported us to make this possible. So thank you. So I think we have a couple of voluntold students that will be coming up.
Come on, ladies first.
So I'm Alana and I come from the Collegio San Carlo. And I was very happy when I found out that we were going to Plymouth this year for the exchange because I went to America once already a few times and I really wanted to go back. And I think that going here with an exchange student is pretty different because a normal trip, you do it with your family, your friends, and you speak Italian all the time. You just speak normal languages and you see museums. I mean, I pretty see museums and stuff like that. Here, it's pretty different because you feel part of the family and you speak English all the time. So I think it's a good experience to practice my English and to see like the way different people behave. And so I was very happy when I found that there was a possibility to do this trip and I like decided to go there right away. And I think that I'm having a lot of fun because I like my family and the people who are hosting me, which are very kind. And yeah, so I think it's a great experience.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matteo from Collegio San Carlo. And this year, when I knew that I'm, I was going to Plymouth, I was really glad about this idea, this new trip, but it was also a little scared because going through the place without knowing the people for 15 days is a long challenge. But then actually, we've been a, a cult very well from our family, from our hosted family was really kind since for the first moment. And so from the first day, I felt like in my second home without having any type of difficulties. I've always done some difficult experiences like this one in some other place, but not for a long time and not in this language. So I think that after you've done it, you'll increase your performances both in becoming a new people and becoming like a new speaker because you become older and also you become like a man and not anymore a child. So it's an important experience also from this point of view. We've always been hosted in a really fantastic way from our family, who was really generous and does in every point of view. And with, and the school organized us a lot of activities that we could do during the entire week so that there wasn't any type of moment where it was like bored or thinking about why I'm not in Milan and I'm here. I am enjoying a lot of this experience. I hope that this hasn't finished, but actually we are on Monday and on Friday, we're going to leave back. And so I have to thank you, to say thank you to the collegio and also to my family, but also to the entire Plymouth because they hosted us and it were, and we had like such a beautiful experience here.
Thank you so much. Well done. Thank you.
Yeah, as you may have understand by their, their witness, it's very important for them from, not just from an academic point of view, but as an act of responsibility towards themselves, to, that's the first time that they're abroad and they have to care about themselves. It happened like, I feel like I have a fever. Yeah? So what you, would you do? It's different, you know, for them. So thank you very much because it may, it may, this, this kind of experience is very important for their growth anyway. Thank you.
It is. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? I don't see any hands. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next agenda item. And we can take a break if our guests want to leave. We'll give them a second to get out so that our reps can be heard.
Be offended.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Isn't it very kind of the students? There's nothing funny in the room. Tiny little teaspoon in the flavor.
I mean, this is almost like...
Different taste than the ones, like I have, I like, I get the ones that are in like the container.
The bigger containers.
Yeah. It's just a little different taste.
Okay. Item, which is our student representatives, and we'll start with North this evening.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jack Freeman. You guys all know me. I was here a couple of weeks ago. I have a nameplate now. I'm sad Gary wasn't here to see that, but I'm sure he would be proud. We're going to start with auditions for the Adams family. Will be held on Tuesday, November 19th and Wednesday, November 19th from 3:30 PM to 5:30 PM. All interested students should plan on attending these tryouts in room 142A. Callbacks will be November 22nd. The Thanksgiving Day Football Game versus South. The tickets will be on sale at all lunches starting Thursday, November 20th through Tuesday, November 26th. And Student Services, and they're also on sale in Student Services, sorry. The advanced price for all tickets is $5 and $8 the day of the game. The Thanksgiving Day Game will be held at Plymouth South High School Thursday, November 28th at 10:00 AM. That'll be fun at their brand new school. Please join us for the ribbon cutting ceremony of the Main Street Bridge mural on Wednesday, November 20th at 3:00 PM. DECA is holding the Trey Chic Fashion Show on Tuesday, November 19th from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Tickets are $8 and will be sold at lunches and at the door. We hope to see you there. Spirit Week began today at North. I don't know if it began for South, but we started with America Monday. It was nice to see most of the students dressed in their red, white, and blue, being very patriotic. I always enjoy seeing that. We continue tomorrow with Tropical Tuesday and Wednesday with Character Day Wednesday and then Throwback Thursday, Sports Friday, Pajama Day Monday, that's my personal favorite, and then Tie-Dye Tuesday. The Cheerleading Regional Finals. Plymouth North High School was host to the MSAA South Regional Cheerleading Competition for all divisions yesterday. 60 schools from Framingham to Cape Cod came to Plymouth North High School all day long to compete in our gym to rave your views. Thank you to Mr. Demanche and Ms. McGuire, who served as site directors as well as Plymouth North staff and custodians for their hard work. Most importantly, congratulations to North cheerleaders, their coach, Ms. Lor, and the parents who did an excellent job as host to the region. They placed fifth in this competition. The Plymouth North High School Dance Team placed first overall at their recent competition at Endicott College this weekend, as they often do. Our dance team does get enough credit. They're great. They win almost every year that I've been in our school, so. Late buses. Due to the holiday, there will be no late buses on Tuesday, November 26th. Please plan accordingly. Bus passes were distributed to all students last week. If your student didn't receive a bus pass, please have them see Ms. Kendall in the main office. Tuesday, November 26th is pep rally for students. Wednesday, November 27th through Sunday, December 1st is Thanksgiving break, so there will be no school. Monday, December 2nd, tryouts begin for winter sports. Basketball, hockey, wrestling, track, cheer, dance, and gymnastics. Make sure you register on Family ID and have a current physical file. And I'm actually very excited about this. Lastly, the Golden Knights Army Parachute Presentation is on 1:00 PM Friday. The weather forecast is mild. I saw a post about them on Facebook. They're really excellent. They look really entertaining and I know I'll be out there on the football field to see them. And just finally, this was on the last one. Attention seniors, if you require any assistance with applications, Common App, Naviance, anything college related, a counselor will always be available to help you. And the third floor computer lab is always available if you need to get on a computer to fill out your Common App. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. Now, South.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight's updates from Plymouth South High School. First of all, with Thanksgiving right around the corner, we remind you to plan to arrive at Plymouth South High School early on November 26th, really early for the Culinary Harvest Market. Doors open at 6:15 AM. Pies, appetizers, breads, all first come, first served. Check out the flyer and our Facebook page. Students and parents are reminded to check their Naviance accounts for new scholarships as well as college admission visits. Thus far, 25 colleges, universities, and technical institutes have visited Plymouth South High School with sessions during K Block. Our school council meeting is this Wednesday at 6:30 PM. On the agenda, along with the school improvement plan, is taking a look at the Communities at Care survey data from last school year. A very special thank you to Dr. Coker from Mass Maritime Admissions, who gave an extremely engaging workshop on emergency room design to our biomedical students a few weeks ago. Students engaged in hands-on activities throughout the morning led by Dr. Coker. While working in teams, students were asked to create their own emergency room designs focusing on special, specialized areas. Adult emergency, pediatric emergency, trauma, waiting room, and triage. This was an amazing experience for our students. Plymouth South students attended DECA Day on the Hill at the State House alongside the other Massachusetts DECA chapters. This event stressed the importance of working relationships with elected government officials. And Plymouth South High School DECA was presented a citation by State Representative Matthew Miratori for the commitment and success of the students and advisors of Plymouth South High School DECA program and preparing emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. They sat in on the House of Representatives debate that ended in a nation-leading vote banning flavored tobacco products on Wednesday. The Theater Guild presented the fall play, The Giver, this past weekend with both shows sold out. The cast and crew worked very hard on the show over the past few months and were so excited to see the product of their hard work. Special thanks to Mrs. Evans, Mrs. Tyler, and Mr. Luciana for their guidance and commitment to these talented students. Today, PYDC shared important documentary, documentary to our juniors and seniors during K Block. If They Had Known is a 30-minute documentary that focuses on the risks and current party culture and the dangers of mixing prescription drugs and alcohol. The film was honest and emotional account of a real life event. It was a valuable viewing experience for our students, encouraging them to take action if a friend is in a critical state. There will be an evening showing on December 3rd at 6:30 at the Plymouth South High School Performing Arts Center. Winter student athletes are reminded to register on Family ID. In addition, thanks to the new feature, over 300 families have been able to pay the athletic user's fee by credit card on the Family ID site. Congratulations to the volleyball team as they received the 2019 MIAA Division II Sportsmanship Award. Our athletic program prides itself on sportsmanship and that, and this group of student athletes and coaches were recognized at the state finals this past Saturday at Worcester State College. Surrounding high school volleyball programs nominated the team and highlighted the leadership of the captains and coaching staff. Proud moment for South. The Boys Cross Country Senior Captain Strickland Davis finished seventh overall in the MIAA All-State Meet. Strickland competed against the best runners in the state and the team of those that qualified took eighth place overall. Amazing year for Strickland and the entire team and coaches. Powder Puff took place last week. An amazing crowd of parents and students came out to support the girls in what proved to be a very competitive series of games. In the end, the championship came down to the sophomores versus the juniors. Although not yet a dynasty, the class of 2021 took home the trophy as they are now two-time champions. Here's the big question. Go to the parade or the state semifinal football game? Congratulations to the football team as they are now Division IV South Sectional Champions as they move forward in the MIAA playoffs with an exciting win over Milton last Friday night. The football team will take on Cansecoa High School on Saturday in the state semifinals. This game will be played at Xavierian Brothers High School in Westwood at 11:00 AM. There will be a student fan bus, however, students must sign up in advance. Cost for the game is $10 for adults and seven for students and senior station, senior citizens. Congratulations to the coaches and players for all their hard work and dedication. The senior class is a great group of student athletes. As we head into Thanksgiving, we will be celebrating and recognizing all sports teams. All-Star Awards, league champs, band awards, senior superlatives, and student clubs at the 2019 pep rally on Tuesday, November 26th. With many fun activities planned, including performances from South Ave, Dance and Cheer, it promises to be a great time for students and staff. The Plymouth North versus Plymouth South Football Game is home this year with the kickoff at 10:00 AM on Thanksgiving. Advanced tickets will go on sale November 20th in the school for $5. Tickets are $8 at the gate on game day. Finally, from a student's perspective, I would like to add that on Monday and Tuesday of next week, the South Student Council will be handing out turkey baskets for those in need whom have already signed up to help provide Thanksgiving Day meals. The Student Council members will be organizing these baskets as well as passing them out. Two weekends ago, Abby and I had the opportunity to attend MASCE Conference and Hyannis with Mrs. Hahn, as well as a luncheon. It was a wonderful experience and we discussed the differences and similarities about our committees.
Excellent report. A great deal of information. I say that every time. Thank you so much, both of you. So we have a couple of program updates this evening. Dr. Campbell?
Yes, so we'll start with Mr. Avatabli is here to speak about Harbor Academy. We've had a very successful year, so Kevin's here to sort of update us on what's been taking place this past year.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Kevin Avatabli. I'm the Director of Harbor Academy, the alternative program for the district. So as you can see, I, this is the first time I presented in two years. So the last time I presented was November of 2017 and we went through a lot of changes over the last two years. So we have a lot of information to kind of present to you, to show you kind of where we were to where we are right now. So we rebranded, obviously, from the Alternative High School, which was a four-day-a-week credit recovery program that was housed at Plymouth North High School, into Harbor Academy in the summer of 2018, which I sat in front of a lot of you for many nights, which was very enjoyable. I'm glad we're doing it again. But the purpose of this was basically to move away from the credit recovery model and try to focus on the whole student, to really give them what they need in an environment that was supportive, but also high, holding them accountable for their behavior, actions, and academics. We moved to Lincoln Street to the lower level. We've transitioned our 15 part-time staff into seven full-time positions and part-time para. We have a different credit system, which really isn't the fact that we're offering less classes, oh, the less credits. It's just kind of aligned with how many classes we're able to offer. At Plymouth North and Plymouth South, they do block scheduling, so they're offering 18, eight classes for a semester, about 13 for the year where we're offering eight for the year. But we meet every day, so that's something that our kids do a little bit better with, the constant repetition as opposed to the, the rotating schedule. The big, we also, we go from 10 to three and then we offer transportation, which has been a huge help for the program. The big thing, we, we've implemented a work-study program for our upperclassmen. We've increased time on learning. We built in community service into the program. And then also have a project base. We call it Rock Block, which is our foundation, which teaches, we have four, five major ones, self-sustainability, facilities maintenance, the school store, and then the mentorship program. This year was the first year we offered an entire class for the work-study program that we have, but they're all kind of on that same idea of trying to teach these kids skills for the future. The community service programming, so we actually go, we have, we did a couple of things. This was all last year. We go across the street to Nathaniel Morton and we have a group of students that mentor some, some identified students over at Nathaniel Morton. It's a highly successful program. It not only benefited our students, but their students as well. Their students loved having our kids come over. They were, you know, like rock stars, you know, but it also taught our kids, because they, every Friday when we go over there, they're uncomfortable, they're anxious, they're a little nervous, but then they go over there, they, they get the immediate gratification of having the kids kind of buy in, to build long-term relationships over the course of the year. So it really was a highly effective program that we're continuing to do. We also volunteered at the Sunrise Senior Living Center where one of our, our parents actually was the director, so we were able to garner that relationship. And then also the facilities management, so one of ours works with the head custodian here, Cindy, and they do a lot of maintenance around the grounds here. And so that's part of, of what they do. So it's just about giving back, getting them to hold countership, ownership for their own, you know, accountability. Oh, so they're kind of just touching on that right there. So they prepare the one thing, so Monday through Thursday, they prepare an event or a classroom activity. And then Friday, they go over there and actually teach the students that activity, the kids themselves, the teachers. We have one teacher who's really just there as a, as a bumper to make sure that everybody kind of stays on track. We also spent a lot of time trying to focus on, on the kids and their needs, like I said. So we brought in a lot of speakers over the course of the year, including working with PYDC. We did a presentation on ACEs, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences for our students, which a lot of our students have had. We did adolescent in brain development, specifically attached to addiction in the brain. Greg O'Sullivan, our MSN, also did nutrition and wellness. Kevin Rosario, who's actually coming back in on Thursday of this week, who's a very powerful speaker, very real, our kids related to very, very well, spoke about his, his use of substances in his past, some criminal issues that he had, and then kind of the rebirth, you know, works for Gosnold, so he was extremely effective with our kids. We did Healthy Heart, which was meditation and mindfulness, which was kind of a swing and a miss, not, not because of anything to do with that, but it's, our kids are tough and it has to, the curriculum has to be geared towards our kids. And that's kind of something that we learned last year is really trying to find the pulse of our kids and figuring out how to deliver the curriculum. So the curriculum itself is useful. It's really just trying to figure out a way to get it in front of our kids without them being dismissive about it. So we're continuing to try that. So the same thing, we did a KOP group at the Karen Center, which is children or children who've been affected by substance use or abuse somehow in their family. We did, so this is something that I worked with Dr. Campbell about, partnership with the youth works and something that we're hopefully looking to grow in the future, was basically getting paid employment for our students over the course of the summer. So we had 14 students participate where we, we paid employment for them to get jobs that they were otherwise be unable to attain. So not, not basic teenage jobs, but really career-type jobs that we treat as internships or co-ops for our students to try and get them in the fields that they're really strong with. So a lot of our kids are really good with their hands, really good, you know, thinking outside the box. And so trying to get them jobs in the field so that they can kind of work through some of those highs and lows with us while they have the support is super important and something that we kind of took this program and now implemented it as a, as a fundamental base of our program as a whole to try to get them, you know, to work. Working with any adolescent can be challenging in the, in the real world. You know, they can be unreliable, they can have ups and downs, they can have good days and bad days. But giving the employers a place and a contact person to call made them feel a little bit safer about putting our kids on and was actually extremely successful. So we actually had a few students work for the Plymouth Public Schools Special Education Camp over the summer, which was awesome. One of our students actually transitioned into a full-time role now. She's a full-time para at one of our schools, so, which is very cool because that's life-changing opportunities. Mag Trucking and Bridgestone Corporation in Plymouth, which is a trucking company, but also they do... to try to get them, you know, to work. Working with any adolescent can be challenging in the, in the real world. You know, they can be unreliable, they can have ups and downs, they can have good days and bad days. But giving the employers a place and a contact person to call made them feel a little bit safer about putting our kids on, and was actually extremely successful. So we actually had a few students work for the Plymouth Public Schools Special Education Camp over the summer, which was awesome. One of our students actually transitioned into a full-time role now. She's a full-time para at one of our schools, so, which is very cool, because that's life-changing opportunities. Mag Trucking and Bridgestone Corporation in Plymouth, which is a trucking company, but also they do contracting, building houses. We placed five students with them. So it's really just about trying to get the kids opportunities outside of the classroom, which is kind of the goal. Kids learn a lot more when it's not just my voice telling them this is what works. You know, when you're affecting their pocketbook, it really, it kind of changes their mentality a little bit. So last year as a whole, we educated a total of 46 students, came into our program. The average daily attendance rate was 89.3%. 94.8% of our students passed all of their classes. We had 28 graduates, 10 of those continued on to education, which included Quincy College, Cape Cod, Massa Soyet, New England Culinary Institute, and Full Sail. We had one student enter the Job Corps, one student enter Barbara School, and then 16 entering the workforce. Out of those 16, five were specific jobs that we placed them with through the work-study program that they're continuing to work with. So when they started that work-study program in June, so this is a specific case, working with Mag Trucking, Mike Ficini, who's an awesome guy, super, super support for us in the program. But they started off at $12 an hour in June, they worked their way through the summer, they had a largely successful summer. He hired them on full-time, and now they're making $16 an hour, you know, only a few months later. But I've gotten text messages from those kids saying, this is, you know, this changed their life and the trajectory of their life by getting these opportunities while they still had a safety net of sorts beneath them. So something we're really proud of and hoping to grow. So that's our graduating class of last year that we took. Fun fact, I also tore my Achilles on that same day.
You don't have to explain how you did that, but...
Yeah, well, you know, trying to be young and challenge them, so that didn't go well. That was the specific day, so I'll have that memory forever. So this year so far, we have 43 students, 12 female and 31 male. We're continuing project-based learning. We changed to fourth terms for this first time. Historically, we've been two semesters, which kids get graded in January and then in June. We changed to four terms, we're still doing the semesters, so they'll get grades and credits in January, but we're having the four terms, so they get four different grades. And we did that for a couple of different reasons. We were noticing the students were able to pace themselves a little bit when they knew that they're great, they had such a long period of time to do the work. So giving them shorter, concrete timelines helps their time management. It also helps with keeping them eligible for extracurriculars. At North, there was a couple of opportunities last year where kids came into us and they were very successful to begin with. But then in that semester break, where usually you get your grades around Thanksgiving, you're eligible to play basketball or wrestle or anything like that. For our kids, they weren't eligible now until mid-January, so they were missing two seasons. And so instead of waiting, having them wait, we wanted to reward them for doing well in our program. So giving them the terms, getting on the same schedules Plymouth North and South has helped us do that. And so it was, it's been a good decision so far. We also partnered with, which I'll touch a little bit more about these than the next ones, but North, the Northeast Wilderness Trust we partnered with, which is what we're doing bi-weekly field trips to the muddy ponds in Kingston to do real-life, kind of on-the-site learning for environmental and earth science. Expansion of the work-study, like I said, we made it a specific classroom, we're spending time on it, we're helping out with the, you know, we're helping out with the jobs, where we're really trying to build that program to try and make it into, you know, a school-to-work type of mentality. And then we've continued Friday at Friends, and we've expanded a green team. Which green team, when I came into the district eight years ago, they ran green team at North for students to kind of give them added incentive to work with their hands. And so they ran facilities management programs for Plymouth North, they were able to go out and do projects. So we do something similar now, we're trying to expand it more, but we have a group of five kids that go out, they help out here right now primarily in Nathaniel Morton, but they've done, you know, mowing the lawn, landscaping, painting, breaking down desks, you know, basic needs around the building. But it's really trying to give them just the opportunity to, like I said, have another voice, to move in a positive direction. We redesigned our curriculum, so for, we were, we used to be, we had 700 level courses because we were night school and we were going to school a little bit less. You know, the credits were just kind of is what it was, the kids were going to school. But now that we're in the classroom every day, we have the teachers, we have kids who have varying needs, so we wanted to make sure that they were getting credits for what the work they were doing. So all summer we spent with the teachers, trying to redesign and redevelop our curriculum for CP1 and CP2 students in the same classroom, and improving our ability to differentiate with those students. So we've really tried to work hard on that to make sure that the rigor that our kids were getting in the classroom was increased. I'm currently working on a universal grading rubric to try and get every kid to understand the values that we are really preaching in the classroom, you know, so that they can understand how to get the grades. And so that's, I'm hoping to have implemented by second semester. It's something I'm working on with some of the curriculum coordinators. I did a lot more over the summer, it's been kind of slow right now, but the goal is to have it implemented by second semester. We have some students doing dual enrollment, the aviation program at Cape Cod Community College, and then also Quincy College. We've implemented Knowledge Matters curriculum for our math and business classes. And our students have actually designed and distributed a PHA newsletter, which they're really proud of and spent a lot of time on it to try to, we've sent home, we do monthly progress reports for our students, so we send those home monthly for our parents. We sent them out to administration just so that they can kind of see what the kids are doing in a different environment. So this is what I talked about, the Northeast Wilderness Trust. So it's trying to just engage outside classroom to increase their real-life teaching or real-life learning. So it's given our teachers, our teacher partnered with Joe Falconeri of the Northeast Wilderness, and they basically came up and have designed a curriculum based around those two classes around this, this natural preserve, which is taking what we're learning in the classroom and bringing it out into the real world again. It was that same kind of philosophy of taking what they're doing and trying to find something that's real life for them, which is constantly what our kids say they don't learn, and so constantly what we're trying to put in front of them. So the hands-on experience. The early intervention, this is the first year that we have actually taken students directly from eighth grade. So historically, we've always waited for kids to fail at Plymouth North and Plymouth South. You know, they have to fail in order to get into the program for us to intervene. And it just became this, this pattern of like, alright, well, you haven't failed enough, so why don't you fail a little bit more and then you can come join us? Which isn't my natural philosophy, it isn't what I agree with, it's not what I want to do. You know, I believe in early intervention, that's, you know, Dr. Campbell and I have spoke at length about it many times. It's just not, it's not what I believe in the core about how to intervene with a student. So we took three true freshmen coming from eighth grade, and it's been extremely successful. I worked with Principal Palladino over at PCIS, at the time Principal Morganwick. It's something that I would love to grow and continue to grow. I think we've definitely experienced some challenges with getting students a little bit younger in such a small program, because we do have such a wide range of ages. And so it really kind of changes the narrative of what we're talking about day-to-day. Like, are we a school-to-work program or are we a early intervention program? You know, I do think that there has to be a common, a central theme to what we're doing in order to find most success. I do think this is the most effective way to intervene so that you don't have to, you don't have to, when they're older, I mean, poorly way of putting it, but it's just, you gotta, you gotta get them younger in order to try and redirect them as they, as they kind of grow. So it's something that I think we'll continue to work and continue to talk about and try and find different opportunities to, to come up with the right solution. I'm not sure if what we're doing right now is right or not, well, you know, that's how we learn, so we're continuing to learn. The work-study program, so right now we, this is designed, what we talked about, for upperclassmen who are on target to graduate. So they enter into our classroom, they have to be working 20 hours a week, they meet with our work-study coordinator, they meet with the bosses that they're working at, they do site visits, they have to turn in their pay, they meet as a group to go over their challenges of the week, you know, what's going on, if they're getting fired, if they're getting hired, it's all about the process, the paperwork. So it's really trying to be the middleman to help them transition. You know, what we learned is, when we were graduating kids a few years ago, is that they were graduating, but then they were falling off a cliff and they didn't feel it, because the primary goal, credit recovery, was to try to get them their diploma. Once they got their diploma, it was like, alright, well, it's been real, good luck. But, you know, I think what we learned for our kids is that we have to do a better job of transitioning them out so that they always feel like they have a place and a safety net to come back to. So, you know, even with the kids that we graduated last year, or even two years ago, I've had a number of kids come back to me and ask for help. Can we get more help? Can we get a job? Can we do this? And I think just being that pillar for them, that strength, it gives them a feeling that they, just because they fail at one thing doesn't mean that it's over. So I think that's something that has been really good. So the green team we talked about, and this is just the start of the year, so I made this three weeks ago, so it's a little different, but the average daily attendance is 91.17. The first term closed a few weeks ago, so 83.4 of them passed all their classes. But I think the biggest thing is that we have 21 total students who are currently employed. So when we ran the night school program, a lot of people had concerns about changing it from the night school because it was made for those kids to work. But in my experiences at the night school, we only probably about had four or five kids who were truly working. And now we have confirmed 21 students out of 43 who have employment. And some of them real, you know, solid career-type jobs. Not to diminish the other ones, but, you know, the placements that we're talking about are really trying to get them these, these co-op, these internship opportunities in fields that they could be successful with. So upcoming events, we have the Career College Fair coming up in early January. We have Kevin Rosario speaking, we're going to Cape Cod Aviation College tour. We've partnered with the Comprehensive Health Service Grant to help our counselor, try to provide a little bit more mental health services to our students. In partnership with that, we're working on the mindfulness, like I said, redoing a curriculum around that to try and figure out the right way to deliver it. Continuing to partner with several local businesses, Naviance Training, and then the UTI, Life After High School Training. And that's pretty much it. So in kind of closing for our program, I think we're very successful at what we do. But we, you know, there's large gaps, we still need to figure out the primary focus and kind of the direction that we want to go to best service the students. You know, but that's something that we're continuously working on and progressing. And we spend a lot of time thinking about it, probably too much time, so you could ask me about that.
Well, it is clear your evolution from a credit, a credit recovery program has gone way beyond expectations. That's fantastic, these kids have a home base. And I love that report that they come back to you after they've left. That really tells you something.
All the time, had to get a new phone for it.
Excellent, excellent. Many members, Ms. Badger?
I just have a quick question about the three freshmen. Now, when you take the three freshmen on, and obviously you're still trying to figure out what that looks like, but is the goal to return them to either South or North, or is it to keep them through this, the four years?
Yeah, so I think that's a really good question, it's something that we talk about. So I think the goal is to give them opportunities, right? So if they do well with us freshman year, they could apply to a vocational program, or they could go back into North, or they could stay with us and work through the program. But they have opportunities, as opposed to going to North or South and failing, and then their only opportunity is to come to us. So I think get the earlier intervention, you're just trying to open up doors, which is what we do with the school-to-work kind of philosophy. You know, you're trying to show them, you know, if you work this program, if you do certain things, there's opportunities available to you. And I think that it's been helpful for the younger kids to see so many of our kids working in that program because it's like, alright, well, there's something else out there, like maybe it's not here, maybe it's not there. You know, I will say getting the younger kids, so although this is the first year we took the eighth graders, we took second semester freshmen last January. Having the younger kids, you know, they have, there's a process that they have to go through in order to understand where they are, and they're still trying to figure that out. And that's okay, and we're supportive of that. So, you know, we have had some ebb and flow with some of our younger kids, but really like it's, it's about just giving them opportunities to make that decision for themselves. So I think that has, has been good. So I'm not sure what the future holds for those three, but they were appropriately placed, they're doing very well with us, you know, passed all their classes. And so at the end of the year, we'll kind of meet with appropriate people and see what the next step is for them.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
I hope this is not naive, but I want to say that having 13-year-olds in your program with 20-year-olds, that maybe the 20-year-olds would act as better leadership models, because the 13-year-olds are there.
That is a beautiful idea.
Told you it was naive.
I think that the, by the time, so our oldest student right now is 19, and our youngest is 14, so it's 14 to 19. I think by the time our older kids have worked through the program, there's a level of mutual respect and understanding that they, that they feel. So it's not that they're doing it for the 14-year-old, I think they're doing it because they have a strong relationship with us. And what we ask for them to do is, is be leaders and empower them. So a lot of what we do in the program is, this is your program, we're just here to kind of facilitate different things, you know, it's not a punitive place, it's not a, it can be whatever you want it to be, you know. So I think the kids who work our program well find a place where they have a different type of relationship that they've had in different places, and that has been beneficial for the younger kids who are coming from an environment where it may still be adversarial. It may still be, well, we don't really tell the teachers or principals this, because they haven't really identified how to make those positive relationships. And so by seeing the older kids do that with us, helps facilitate them to kind of follow that same lead. So I think that is where it is. I don't know if it's consciously because there's younger kids in the program, but I do think it's because there's a positive culture that we've created that facilitates that.
Okay, excellent, excellent. Any other, Dr. Campbell?
Just a couple of comments, I think that coming here and not going to Oak Street was a blessing in disguise. It's really worked out very, very well for us, we wouldn't be able to do what, Kevin wouldn't be able to do what he's doing now, I think, with that facility. Kevin is a very impatient person, and I say that as a compliment, he's impatient with himself. If you look at the logo for Harbor Academy, it says, "Expect More," he's always expecting more from himself. I think he expects more from his, he expects a lot from his staff, but more importantly, expects more. He wants the kids to expect more for themselves, and I think that's reflected in the many things and opportunities that he's provided to his students, you know, with the mass hire partnerships to provide the summer employment, the mentoring, the service opportunities. It's really much more than just getting that diploma, because at the end of the day, we know how much that's worth. It's valuable, but there's so much more to our graduates than, than their diplomas. So I think Kevin's done a remarkable job in building...
And I would add that when we toured your program, the school committee toured your program at the end of, it's the last academic year, each of us walked away impressed. They're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Another program update, Dr. Campbell?
Yes, this evening we have Ms. Sylvia, who will be coming to present on the College Career Technical Education. I think she has a few guests with her, so I'll allow, we'll have Cindy come up and introduce her program.
Alright.
Evening, welcome.
Thank you. So, as Dr. Campbell said, I'm Cindy Sylvia, I'm the career direct, career, college career and technical education director here in Plymouth. And behind me, you can see my staff, supportive staff, paras, teachers, department heads. And that's the kind of support that I get from them every single solitary day, that I get to work with these amazing educators and just amazing people altogether. So on behalf of them, myself, I thank you guys for allowing us to come and do our program update today. So to start with some of the data, at Plymouth South High School, we have 561 students in CCTE programming. At Plymouth North, we have 378, for a total of 939. That's up from the 925 from last year, and that's predominantly because we were lucky enough to have a second cohort of allied health at Plymouth North High School. And in that second cohort, it means that 100% of our kids who wanted allied health this year got it, which is a pretty impressive thing, because it's very, very much sought after. We still also have 201 students on our waitlist to get into career, college career, technical education here in Plymouth. Our programs remain the same, allied health, automotive technology, auto collision repair, CAD, carpentry, culinary cosmetology, early education and care, electrical engineering facilities, graphic visual communications, HVAC, marketing at both Plymouth North and South, medical assisting, and plumbing technology. And like I said, I don't know what happened there. Is it going to be there? Okay. I don't know, they're missing. Okay. So like I said, I have this amazing team that I get to work with every single day, and the leadership team and the department heads and I really work as a unit and with the teachers to give the very best of ourselves and that career and technical education has to offer to our students. And so they are the experts, I simply facilitate, and they're going to take you around the shop.
Hello, my name is Chris Baker. I am the Transportation Department at here at Plymouth South High School, and I am pleased to present the following program update. The Transportation Department is using a SimSpray virtual reality paint simulator in all its auto collision classes. Students are joining to be able to practice their painting skills without costing material in unnecessary. The Transportation Shop uses off new online textbooks for all of technology and auto collision. These new texts automatically update and align to MATEF curriculum and IFD standards and the Massachusetts State curriculum. They also allow students to access the texts from anywhere using a log unit test. And finally, the Auto Technology Program, it just recently had its five-year MATEF program evaluation. MATEF stands for the National Technician Education Foundation. NATEF stands for the National Technician Education Foundation. The evaluation team is made up of industry experts. This team respects the facility, tools and equipment. They also check for regular alignment, food structure, structural practices, and concrete draft. I'm proud to report our special achievement.
My name is Stephanie Anwarjer. I am the Department Chair for Early Education and Care. In the Career and Technical Student Organization, Skills USA, our students have showcased their skills in a variety of ways. We are proud to have supported a chapter officer, a fourth-place district competitor, a silver medalist at the state level, and an elected national skills USA president. Also, our senior and junior class participated in a new squad Youth of Winners competition, in which they had three medalists who helped to inspire and empower children to make healthy choices. With non-conditional student participation and a variety of internships, new opportunities for our students to develop the necessary skills to thrive in the field of early education.
Hello, my name is Crafton Haas, and I serve as the Department Head of both CAD shops and both Graphic Design and Visual Communication Programs here at Plymouth South. As both CAD students and the graphic students of Rastor Art Program, I'm goals to expose them by depth with real-world experience to get them things with essential creative tools. Some examples will highlight upon our students who both have programs achieved this in the fall. For us in CAD, our students were challenged to develop a concept plan to design to develop a modern facility building using structures.
Which would be beneficial to all our tech studies programs. We also are in early stages of 3D printing and manufacturing, which is cutting-edge technology. Our students were able to help assist in solving a design and manufacturing problem for laptops for our students involved in the ASDS programs. As for the graphics department, the students' talents were put to use in helping in graphic design and digital photography prints that were beneficial for school activities, including Linkin Street, the booster programs, as well as local businesses. A lot of the students' photography talents are displayed annually each spring at now our very successful showcase through the lens in our Black Box Theater. As for the visual communication, the students' talents were utilized in camera work for school and local community events by filming and editing both in studio and on location, which can be seen often through our award-winning program, Panther TV. I'm happy to report also that students in both of our programs are getting more active in the Skills USA competition. Last year was our biggest enrollment of students participating, and I am pleased to announce that our first-ever gold medal placement winner at the district level. I'm very excited with the technology advancement of both the CAD and Graphic Design and Visual Communication Programs here at Plymouth South.
Hi, I'm Chuck Goonan, Department Head of Plymouth South High School's Marketing Education Program. Plymouth South Marketing continues to partner with Rocket Wear to offer customized Plymouth South brand-name clothing and sportswear with online ordering 24/7/365 a year. For the seventh year, Marketing organized and sponsored Lights of Hope, a fundraising event to benefit the cancer center at BID Plymouth. This was held on December 7th on the same evening as the downtown holiday tree lighting and winter lights road race. With the cooperation of the Plymouth Gris Mill, students and staff in the Marketing Program displayed the luminary around the Gris Mill property and Brewster Gardens. In April, the Sixth Annual Credit for Life Fair was held at Memorial Hall. Over 150 Plymouth South juniors interacted with many local businesses who volunteered their time to educate students about financial literacy. For the 12th consecutive year, Plymouth South School Store, commonly known as "The House at Panther Place," earned Gold Level Certification for School-Based Enterprises from National DECA. Sophomores, juniors, and seniors from the Marketing Program competed at the DECA District Competition in Quincy. Several who qualified there advanced to the state competition in Boston in March. Finally, six students headed to Orlando, Florida in late April for the International Career Development Conference.
Hi, I'm Kelly Medina, Department Head in Cosmetology. Cosmetology is always busy with clients, and the seniors have done a great job so far. They've completed their job shadows and salon tours. It's always fun to see our past students working successfully in the industry. We have also had many guest speakers that include Cosmo alumni that are salon professionals, brand representatives, and demonstrators from the Drybar, Matrix, and Keratin Complex. We have met many local salons that contact us looking for assistants and receptionists for their salons. Our core philosophy is to inspire our students to stay in this amazing industry by exposing them to as many salon professional opportunities as possible.
Hi, my name is Steve Medaris, and I'm the Construction Cluster Department Head. I have the pleasure of representing the carpentry, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical programs. We have had a busy year in the construction cluster. Our students have been hard at work, winning Skills USA medals, participating in co-op, various outside jobs, and the remodel of Lincoln Street. Carpentry's main focus of the past year was the remodel of Lincoln Street. This project took over half the year and included all aspects of the renovation project, from demo to framing, all the way to paint. In addition, we have increased our enrollment in the program significantly and doubled the amount of co-op students. In plumbing, along with being major participants in the remodel of Lincoln Street, students have been involved in several outside jobs within the community. While at Skills USA, we achieved a bronze medal at the district competition and a silver medal in the state competition. We continue to grow our enrollment and our co-op placement. Last year, 100% of our co-op students received full-time employment at their co-op placements upon graduation. In addition, all of our employees from last year have returned to us and hired co-op students for this year. Electrical had a big year at Skills USA. At the district competition, they earned two bronze medals, one silver medal, and two gold medals while qualifying three students to compete in the state competition. Additionally, electrical has placed over 50% of their senior students in co-op positions, and 100% of those students received full-time employment upon graduation. In the HVAC program, we hired a new veteran teacher. With this hire, he has worked tirelessly with different vendors and companies to acquire $60,000 worth of equipment and tool donations. Through these donations, we have significantly upgraded our equipment status of the program. As the Department Head of the Construction Cluster, I couldn't be prouder of all the staff and the students involved in the program. We have raised a bar for ourselves and continue to push vocational education to the highest level.
My name is Susan Martin, and I'm happy to report to you the highlights of the 2018-2019 school year. As usual, we had an extremely busy and successful year. We sent 12 students, which is our 100%, to the district-level Skills USA competition. Three of those 12 went on to the state level. Two competed in dining room service in Abby Fernandez and Commercial Baking. Ms. Fernandez went on to the national-level competition in June, where she placed ninth out of 38 competitors. Chris O'Connor participated in an American Culinary Federation event with three of our students in March of 2019 at the Lobster Trap Restaurant. He and the team worked as a guest chef and showcased one of the four-plated items available at that event. Because of their participation in this event, a scholarship was awarded in the amount of $1,500 to Abby Fernandez. Chef O'Connor and a small entourage participated in the annual Day on the Hill at the state Capitol, which showcases the vocational culinary programs from around the state. We traveled to Johnson and Wales University and toured the campus with all of our sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and were treated like VIPs to a gourmet luncheon prepared and served by the students at the university.
Hello, my name is Laura Drew. I am the Career and Technical Education Department Chair at Plymouth North High School. The Allied Health Program continues to enjoy many successes. For the eighth consecutive year, 100% of juniors enrolled in the state-approved CNA training program, passed the Massachusetts State Exam, and are now licensed as Certified Nursing Assistance. All juniors became healthcare provider CPR and first aid certified, as well as dementia care certified. The CNA class of 2019 utilized their licenses to participate in our cooperative education program. Allied Health students are college and career-ready, with 100% positive placement for the class of 2019. Graduating students are attending Boston College Nursing Program, Quinnipiac Direct Entry Physicians Assistant Program, and Mass College of Pharmacy/Pharmacist Program, to name just a few. This year, for the first time, every eighth-grade student that applied to the program was accepted due to the addition of a second full-time teacher. By next year, we will service two cohorts of students at each grade level, doubling our past enrollment. The engineering program at Plymouth North continues to be rigorous and competitive. 100% of seniors earn their OCE10 Safety Certification. 50% of seniors pass the Certified Solid Works Associate Exam. The first robotic season was very successful. The students designed, constructed, and entered a competitive robot into competition. The team won the Creativity Award at the New England District Competition. The robot was one of the top 10 scoring robots in our region. 2019 marked the beginning of our engineering students' participation in the cooperative education and internship program. Internship placements included a civil engineering firm, a manufacturing company, and marine imaging technology company. Engineering students are college and career-ready. The civil engineering internship resulted in a job offer to that student. Nearly all engineering students were accepted by their college of choice. Marketing students have been working diligently, both in the classroom and in the shop. The school store, which was recently named "North Station," provided an authentic platform where students researched and implemented new products, price points, and advertising strategies to transition "North Station" into a profit-making extension of the classroom. 100% of our students are involved in DECA. 107 out of the 145 students competing at the district level won medallions. Overall, we had 19 winners, with 12 students earning first-place trophies. These trophy winners earned the right to compete at the International Career Development Conference in Orlando. The students continued their winning ways in Orlando, with four earning coveted finalist spots and one team making it to the big stage for final awards with a fifth-place finish in Entrepreneurship Promotion Plan. This year, our marketing program forged a relationship with Eastern Bank that resulted in two students having the opportunity to participate in our cooperative education program for the very first time in program history. The facility's management program had a very busy and productive year. The students gained valuable, real-world experience in construction and property management. The students were fortunate to have the opportunity to work at the Plymouth Public Schools' new administrative offices at Lincoln Street. Some of the lessons included landscaping, demolition, cabinet work, and plastering. Students worked on jobs within Plymouth North High School, building a new ticket booth for the athletic department, a playset for the arts department, set up and handicapped accessibility for the graduation stage, and even a new patio outside of the cafeteria for the school community. The facility's management co-op program continues to grow, with 40% of current seniors choosing to participate in full-day co-op. Skills USA at Plymouth North High School is a 100% total participation chapter servicing all of our tech students. This year, we had 17 medalists at the district level, representing all four shops at Plymouth North. Six medalists at the state level, with a healthcare knowledgeable team winning the gold qualifying them to compete at the National Skills USA Championships in Louisville, Kentucky.
Well, that was a little bit longer than I anticipated, because that wasn't the edited version, but it did have all the necessary things. Continuing with some of the data, this is our follow-up survey data that we are mandated by the state to report out on, and this is for the class of 2017. They had 207 graduates in the class of 2017. Of that 207, 197, actually, it's 198 replied. So that's 99, 95.5% that actually replied to the survey. And one of the reasons we had so many people reply to the survey is because we gave every student that left in 2017 a forever Gmail address, so that we could hound them until they applied. So that's why we had such a high return this year. When we talk about our positive placement for that, it's 99.89%. Well, what does that mean? That means Mrs. Frye is very happy to know that 70% of our graduates actually go into the field for which they study, which is a very high number, if you think about the number of kids that go through our CCTE program. 20 of our graduates go into the workforce but do not stay in that related field, they go in a non-related field. 104 of our graduates go into post-secondary education, and three graduates go directly into the military. And that's what makes up that 99.89%. So our CCTE kids are getting it done, post-grad. Our co-op and internship program also had an increase of 18 students from last year to this year, to 48. 28 of these students are at Plymouth South, and 20 are at Plymouth North. We're happy to say Marketing is participating, Engineering, and those are some of the reasons for the increase. On our grant report, so our Perkins Grant, which is an entitlement grant, as most entitlement grants have gone down this year, has nothing to do with the town or anything else other than the state, but we had a slight reduction, but I'm happy to say that even with that reduction, I was able to move a few things around, and important things like student membership for Skills USA and DECA were untouched, and that our kids didn't skip a beat as far as services. So I'm happy about that. And also, we are still waiting, but we applied for a $365,000 capital skills grant for an augmented reality, virtual reality auto shop and virtual welder. So I'm hoping that we get that. It should have been out already, but they haven't made any announcements yet. I think the grants are very long, and they have to read them. I know the grant we did was about 40 pages. It has to take into account the different companies that we work with, local industries that we have to partner with, along with our auto shop and Mr. Baker and his team that really guide, I help write the grant, but they help guide the grant, because they are the foremost authority on what that means. And that particular grant, should we get it? It's portable, so we could bring it to the middle schools, we can bring it to the community, the community can come to us. And it really, truly is like state-of-the-art Matrix, Star Trek, right in your face, it's crazy. Like, I've never seen anything like it, but you are really taking apart an engine virtually right in front of your eyes. So that's pretty powerful. We continue to be college and career-ready, and our college articulation agreements are with community colleges, also with Institute of Technology, and four-year colleges too, like Curry College and UMass Dartmouth, to name a few. But they're all affiliated with our program. Our two regulatory updates, as you heard earlier, and I won't touch too much more, but NATEF is our five-year review of our auto program. And although the report is not officially in yet, the report out is that we're a model automotive shop, and they were actually asking if they could do some of our best practices as they take it to other schools. So great job by the instructors in auto. And our CPR review, as you can see, we're chipping away at it, which is why that illustration, little by little. September 12th, we submitted our cap plan to DUCY, and we are eagerly awaiting our So the state mandates, a few things happen with vocational technical education, and one of the things we're going to do in a few minutes hopefully is review and approve our advisory committee. Our advisory committee is put into place so that our kids are learning industry standard, that our equipment is current, that our practices are current, and that our kids are leaving us and being able to go into the field ready to go. They're not working on antiquated machines or registers that don't work, they're working in state-of-the-art, industry-quality environment. And one of the things that we did a few years back is we made our guest speaker somebody who went through our program, because I think that's who should come back and talk to our kids. And so this year's speaker was Julie Pickett, and she came out of our culinary program, and she did an amazing job really taking us through her career path that started here in Plymouth Public Schools and our culinary program. So it was a great night by all, there were 107 members of our advisory for that dinner. And it was hosted by our culinary chefs and our kids, and they did a tremendous job, The next thing that the state has us do is we must do recruiting. And the recruiting we have to do is from the middle schools. So how that works is a system that we use where our CCTE Leadership Council, which is made up of one student from each shop, they go with me and a few other staff members to PCIS and Plymouth South Middle, and we talk to the seventh and eighth grade. Give them tips on how to be successful in school, give them a really inside view from a student what it's like to be in any one of those shops, and give them the opportunity to ask what it's all about from someone who's been there and who is there. And following the visits that we have to the middle schools, we then have the tech expo at Plymouth South Middle, Plymouth South High School, where Plymouth South High School and Plymouth North have all of their shops on display with interactive, engaging, hands-on activities. So our seventh and eighth graders come over for the day, and they spend the day with us. And they spend the day in all these mini-shops, if you will. You know, either they're programming robots, or they're making eggs, or they're creating something in graphics, but it's hands-on, and it's a day that we get to spend with our middle school students. That's followed up by an evening event at both Plymouth North and Plymouth South. At South, Mr. Hannah also has the eight- At South, Mr. Hannah also has the, well, we invite the 8th grade to bring their parents in to see the expo, and then Mr. Hannah and his group also share information about his school with our 8th graders. Same thing at Plymouth North with Mr. Parsland. Him and his group also share their 8th grade information night on that night. And actually, to address the next slide is a special guest.
It is a pleasure to welcome you to tonight's advisory dinner on behalf of all of the students in the college, career, and technical education programs here in Plymouth South.
I don't know why they have the wrong videos going on. Anyway, that's Maria Baker. We'll just skip that. She's amazing.
Explain. Skipper, explain.
We're going to skip that because that welcome is about 20 minutes long, and I had it down to about seven seconds. So, a lot of the videos are a little off. But anyway, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Skills USA in a nutshell, and this will tell you a whole bunch about Maria Baker. So, there are 500,000 students in Skills USA nationally, half a million students, 35,000 here in Massachusetts. Now, to be a member of that leadership team in Massachusetts is elite. To be the president of 35,000 students in Massachusetts is life-changing. Well, Maria Baker is that president of Skills USA Massachusetts. She works tirelessly at the state level, but also represents Plymouth in everything that she does. And she truly is everything that's right about Plymouth Public Schools, CCTE programming, and definitely this community as a whole. So, I think that, you know, I wanted Maria to introduce this slide because she is Skills USA, and she represents so much of what's good in it. Our Skills USA, for the first time, has two, Plymouth North and Plymouth South this year instead of one. We are two amazing chapters and one powerful district. So, at Plymouth South, we have 577 members. 87 of those members competed at the district level, 37 made it to the state level, and four participated nationally. At Plymouth North, we have 345 members. Of those 345, 58 competed at the district level, 16 qualified for states, and four went on to the national conference. That's an amazing, I mean, we compete against regional vocational schools that are spending two, three weeks at a time in some of those trade areas, and we are more than holding our own and then some. And like you heard Sue Martin in the overview, Abby Fernandez, who was one of 35 winners throughout every state, but then is number nine in the country as far as commercial baking goes, which is pretty impressive. Along those same lines with our student-run organizations, we have a powerful DECA program. DECA is an association of marketing students, and our students are connected in that way as well. At Plymouth South, we have 40 students that competed at the district level. Of those 40 students, 17 were state winners, that won to compete at the state conference. Of those 17, six represented us at the International Career Development Conference in Orlando. At North, we had 145 district participants. Of those 145, 76 qualified for states. Those 76, 24 went on to ICDC. And at ICDC, we had four finalists in the country, and that's worldwide. The thing about a student-run organization like Skills USA and DECA is our kids are connected. They are connected in student-run organizations, just like they would be at the next level in any career that they choose. There are, you know, there are career and professional organizations, and that's how they're connected. And I think a connected student is so important. And that gives everybody a chance to be connected. We have our public services to the community. We still do our auto service and repair. We have CAD signs and banners. Our culinary is always hosting, and our restaurant and catering, we do residential carpentry. Our early education and care preschool is at capacity. Our cosmetology salon is always active. Engineering, graphics, and marketing are giving near services, along with our plumbing and electrical students who are always out in the Plymouth community, helping whoever we can, whenever we can. And, you know, and it's always aligned to the frameworks and the things that we need to teach our kids. And one of the things we need to teach our kids is to be connected to the community. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the completion of Lincoln Street. This brings a smile on my face every single time I talk about it, because the people in this room, you know, whether it be our leadership at district, or you sitting across from me as members of the school committee, believe that our kids could do it, believe that our kids could take this building and transform it into what we see today. And the thing that I love the most about it is when I would go through the hallways and I would have, you know, I would see our teachers there, and they're right here behind me right now looking at this beautiful building, but watching the kids believe in themselves. And I walk through, and I would tell the kids, I said, "You know what? Someday, you're going to walk through here with your kids, and you're going to say, 'I made that wall,' or 'I took down that wall,' or, you know, 'I plastered that room,' or 'that room looks that way because of us.' My class did that. My group did that. My program did that." These students just rose to the occasion and made this the beautiful building that it is. So, I think that this played a huge role in everything that was right in our programming this year. So, the completion of Lincoln Street was paramount. We connect with the community through our community service, whether it be the Veterans' Day, whether it be working with the Great, the Artisan Guild, or Lights of Hope, or whatever it is, we stay connected with our community service through both Skills USA, DECA, and the CCTE program as a whole. So, our CCTE goals for 2019, 2020. You know, NEOS talks about the portrait of a graduate, and I was introduced to that term a few years ago, and I loved it because I think that's what we all should be working toward. So, there are a couple initiatives that I'm going to talk about real quick. But our goals for this year is to launch a comprehensive electronic portfolio, which I will talk about in a minute, to increase our parent guarding communication, and not only by text and email, by a phone call, hearing a voice on the other end saying, "Your son or daughter had a great day today in shop. Had an excellent day today. Worked hard and related." But I think that human connection is what we need to really foster good parent guarding communication. Also, reflection and revision of curriculum always is a living, breathing thing, so I think that that's important, and to create more college and career opportunities for our students. And I think that that shows an increase even with our co-op and internship placements. So, that portrait of a graduate, what does it look like? Well, first of all, it looks like our students get at least 16 industry credentials. They may get, they at least get one. Some get many. You know, if they're getting OSHA 10, either general industry or construction, first aid CPR for the healthcare professional, or they're getting licensed as cosmetologists through the state, they're licensed CNA, Certified Nursing Assistance, they are licensed early education and care teachers. When they get out of our programs, those are their licenses. And those are the things they're going to take with them wherever they go. They don't check them at the door. They're not left at graduation. They take them with them wherever they go. So, I think that that's important. And we can report out on the fact that we know just the level of mastery of every single one of our kids through our competency tracking system, not only what they know, but how well they know it. And that's with every standard that exists in every part of the frameworks. And finally, the thing I'm really excited about, this is an initiative that I'm working with the department heads, the teachers, and also our media specialists and integrated technology, is to give our kids a comprehensive electronic portfolio. So, what that means is they get their own website when they leave here. And what it is, is they're going to have an about-me video, 60 seconds, who they are, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior year. They have a resume. They have a cover letter. When they go to apply to get into college and that admissions officer wants to know who they are, they can just use their QRC code and say, "Go to my website. Here I am." And on that website, they're going to have their career plan, they're going to have their tech information and their projects, they're going to have their academic information, they're going to have a photo gallery of showing what they are, who they are, where they're from, and what they can do. And the thing that I'm most excited about at the end of the day, what I want to know about our graduate is I want them to take that portfolio and for us to say, "Show us two pieces from your portfolio that show the most growth in you as a plumber, in you as early education and care teacher, in you as a culinary specialist or a plumber, or show us the most growth in you as a writer. Show us the most growth over your Plymouth career as a critical thinker." And finally, if someone from the Plymouth community picked up your website and started to click through it, what would it say about you? What would it say about the school you came from? And what would it say about the town you live in? Because those are who I think the portrait of a graduate should look like, what it should look like when they graduate from Plymouth Public Schools. And my leadership team and my staff are on board with trying to make this a reality. And it is our hope at the end of this year that each and every one of our CCTE students will have an electronic comprehensive portfolio that encompasses academic and their tech and truly be comprehensive. And we finally finished that portrait of a graduate in their senior showcase, when the community can come in and see all of the work that they've put in since the day they entered the Plymouth Public Schools, through their elementary school, through their middle school years, every ounce of everything that they have put into their education, and come back and see what they've accomplished. Because this is the end game right here. This is who they are, and this is who we graduate. And so, finally, as always, I want you to hear from our CCTE students and what they think about CCTE.
The whole group's kind of like a family, and everybody's super accepting, and we get along really well. So, I feel like if anybody going into it is worried about that, like, they don't have to worry at all.
What I love most about my shop is that I get the most real-world experience, and I spend most of my school days in here, which is going to prepare me for the future of spending all my days and all my time on film and video. And I just get really good real-world experience in the field of what I want to do, and I feel very prepared to take on the next chapter in college with this.
I look forward to going to this class every day, and it's just one of the best experiences I've ever had.
What I love about my shop is that it is a great hands-on experience that helps me personally prepare for my future and what I want to do. The teachers are amazing and know a ton about what they specialize in, and they help every student individually in a very amazing and hands-on manner.
Electrical has really prepared me for the future, not only through my teachers, but how they teach and how far they push me.
What I love about the tech program as a whole, but specifically plumbing, is being able to get a head start on what I want to do after high school, being able to see what it's like to be out in the field, working on outside jobs with other techs, and being able to meet new people and have new opportunities.
What I love about early education and care and the tech program as a whole is the ability to interact with people who love the same things that I do, and that I'm prepared for the future, and I'm just able to do the best that I can doing something that I love and that I really care about.
Co-op, it's very hands-on, and I'm already doing the work. So, I'm building my hours so that when I graduate high school, I don't need to go through that and take years to build up these hours, and I'm already gaining the skills to do the job. So, when I go for an interview, or when somebody asks me, "What can you do?", I can say, "Well, I can do this. I can do this, and I know how to do this." And it's like, wow, you're already that prepared, and that just makes me getting a job way easier.
The hands-on experience we get in the shop is really as close as you can get to being in the field in real life, and it's a really good way to really make sure that you know what you're doing when you're on the job.
So, I always say the best part of my job is being with the students. I know just making this presentation made me smile for hours. Knowing the role that we all play in igniting these students' thirst for learning and their passion for their CCTE program is incredible. I've made a copy of the presentation just so you can take a look at those faces, because you had just as much to do with putting that smile there from your vantage point. So, I just want to thank you, and if there's any questions, I got the experts behind me who, because I put them in the video and not in front of the microphone, owe me.
Ms. Hunt.
I have a quick question, but a comment too. I was at the advisory dinner, and I just want to let you know that my company hired Julie to do an event, so December 6th. She is, I met her, I had a conversation with her. She's doing a big event for my company and maybe another one in February, and we were so impressed. It wasn't even a choice. So, once we went there, my company was blown away by her and her staff and what they could do. So, that was probably worth it for her right there.
And that's the connection right there that I want to make. I want our past, present, and future Plymouth students to be there and network with each other.
Yeah, and I was even thinking on that wavelength when I was talking to her, and all of a sudden, I went, "Wait a second. We're looking for something." So, it just, it worked out perfectly. So, my question is, I know Ms. Drew said that all the Allied Health students were able to get into the program, and I know it said that there's still 201 on the waiting list. What's the, like, do most of those kids get in on their second year, or is there some kind of a?
It depends. It depends on which school, which program.
Okay. All right. Is it still, I mean, I know it's super competitive. I just, sometimes I wonder if that, you know, that student that's not the best student that, but you know will do so, so well in the technical program. I think all of you know how I feel with my own children, and I think every student should have some kind of opportunity in your classes. And I just feel for these kids, if some of them are at the top with academics and for whatever reason, they're not getting into any kind of a program.
I think one thing, Ms. Hunt, I can add, I work, I get to work with Cindy a lot, and staffing comes into play a lot. We were fortunate to add an Allied Health position.
That's what she said was another, yeah.
Yeah. Because we reduced a position at Plymouth South High School, we transferred the position, you know how we always talk about the cutting to the shifting of positions? So, that was how we were able to do that. So, that's a major factor in it, as well as space in the shop. There's many layers to it, and, you know, keeping it as a comprehensive focus versus a pure vocational. So, that's.
Such an amazing problem. You just feel bad for any kid that can't get into it.
They do a great job of the fluidity.
And we're very mindful, and we've been talking about this quite a bit recently, not just the students that are on the waitlist, but students that perhaps don't get on the waitlist, students back at North and South High School. You heard Ms. Avatabli talk about some of the partnerships that we've had. One of those is through Mass Hire. So, Mass Hire does an excellent job in providing resources for industry employment. So, we're currently working on a grant to provide some additional opportunities for students who perhaps are on that waitlist, perhaps didn't make it to the waitlist, because we're mindful. we're mindful of those students. We really need to...
Finding all different pathways for them to get to that end game.
Finding different opportunities for students, you know. So all the students that you just mentioned, as well as Kevin's and his program. And even the students that are back in our schools that are taking a purely academic track. It's really important for students to understand what's out there in the industry. Because in all reality, I think many times, even as adults, it's hard to keep up. You know, I just learned recently that we have 70 companies within the Plymouth area that are in manufacturing. And it's one of the highest growing programs. It's also very, not only employable, but in terms of salaries, it's a very valuable program. So we're looking at things like that and looking at healthcare and other opportunities to really find those niche programs that maybe don't fit in because of staffing, because we can't, there's only so much we can do regarding that. But really trying to find those niche programs that can supplement what we're currently doing and also support the kids that we can't meet through the programs that Cindy has highlighted this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other committee members. Ms. Badger.
I don't really have a question. I did start off with a number of questions, but they were all answered. So thank you so much. But I did want to thank you and your staff for just the enthusiasm you have. I mean, whenever we see you at any event, like, the smile on your face and the smile on everybody's faces. And it's contagious, the students. You can see it in Maria and all the other students on the video and any students that we kind of interact with at any of those nights. There are just the joy in doing what they love, what they've found their passion. And finding your passion is such an important thing in life. Like, what do you do without your passion when you're an adult? Like, you've got to know what you want to do with your life and whether that's what they want to do for the rest of their life, or it's just a part of their life where they find their next step. It's really important. So thank you for what you all do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just briefly, one, I really enjoy, I have an opportunity to, every month, to walk around. We have like a walking meeting, Cindy and I, through the programs. It's really nice to, not only, you've heard about it tonight, but to be able to see the programs and see the great work that our staff do with the kids. And one thing I want to highlight is, you go into every shop, you go into every classroom, and you're going to see the standards that are up on the board too. So not only are they teaching it, but they're getting it, they're reflecting back to the standards that they're teaching in the night days. And the students, when you go up to them, ask them what they're doing, they understand what they're doing and why they're doing it. So they've really done a nice job in really highlighting and getting the students to be mindful of the standards that are related to that particular shop. So that's really nice. And I can just say, as a parent who has had a student, I know Ms. Hunt has had a student that's graduated recently too, very successful. I mean, my son is OSHA certified, he's Solid Works certified. His first year as an engineer student has been seamless transition academically too, which is a testament to our school district, I should say. But in terms of the career in technical education, just outstanding, really. And then lastly, I think that we need to start a dental hygienist program because, looking at all the candy that those kids got, I think the Panther Pals are going to have some cavities.
The newest program. Again, I'd just like to thank you and thank my staff and everybody who came out tonight. They always come out. They come out every time we go anywhere. And, you know, it just speaks volumes to the team that really I get to work with every day. And Mr. Hannah, who came out today, he's got about 7,000 things that he goes through on a nightly basis, and he's here tonight. So I appreciate that as well.
Our first action item this evening is on the advisory. You want to address that now so we can take that vote?
Okay. So the advisory is made up of 207 members in all 16 programs. And I ask that you accept them.
So we will need a motion to accept the advisory member list for, as of fall 2019. This is a requirement by the, requirement by somebody. Who requires it?
Chapter 74 Regulations.
Department of Education.
Department of Education.
Ms. Hunt.
I'll move that we accept the advisory council.
Seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions? Okay. Shall we vote on this?
For some reason, it keeps bouncing to this item and it's, I don't know if we're going to have to do a, I don't know what's going on, Ms. Grubbs.
All right, it's not coming up, so we'll take the vote orally.
Would you just do a roll call, say it work?
Yeah, we'll do that.
And look at the technology layer.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion, it's been seconded. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. The school committee's going to take a break. We'll be back here to continue our meeting at 8:45. Okay, we are back in session. Thank you, everybody. The next item on our agenda is to get a recommendation on a field trip. Dr. Campbell.
Yes, this evening, we have Mr. Cardoso and Ms. Jalbert who are here to speak. This is a request for an international trip to Lima, Peru in April of 2021. They've been before here before with many opportunities, so very well-versed in the process. And we'll turn it over to you to explain the proposal.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Cardoso, I'm a math teacher at Plymouth North High School. And we are very happy and excited to be bringing another opportunity to our students for 2021. We would like to take them to Peru and visit one of the nature wonders of the world, Machu Picchu. Two years ago, when I visited myself, I was able, fortunate to have hiked the Inca Trail. And being able to make that connection from what I had learned in the history books and being able to see that what civilizations so many years ago were able to see going through the sun gate, all I could think is that how I would love to be able to bring students there and have the same opportunity that I did. So I feel that whenever we can bring those experiences to our students outside of the classroom and they can make the connections while they learn the textbook, that just makes it so much more worthwhile. And the reason why we're planning so far in advance, because we want to try to make that affordable to every single student. So by planning for this trip for only April of 2021, which is the best time of the year to go there, which is not, it's the beginning of the dry season, so, and it's not as popular during that time as well, we would be able to make it affordable for our students. They would be able to pay less than $200 per month. It's only about $180. And with the amount of fundraisers that we'll be able to give our students, and for the first time, we'll be able to also help them with a scholarship where they will be able to apply through the company that we go with. So we are just excited for this opportunity for them. And as you can see on the itinerary, they would not be missing any school days, so they will be going during April break. We were able to work with the travel company, so they would leave exactly on Saturday and return on the Sunday after. So we'll be maximizing their time there as well. And I'll let you. And for this table, we also brought one of our students who has traveled with us in the past and who has shown interest on some of those opportunities that we have brought so far.
I'm Nicole Jalbert. I teach biology at Plymouth North. So this is our, I think, fifth trip coming to you guys to propose. And we're just excited about this one, to kind of give the opportunity to the students to, like Mr. Cardoso said, to kind of learn what's in their, in their history books and things that they've seen and learned about, but now to actually see it in real life. We do offer them multiple opportunities to fundraise. I'm kind of in charge of the fundraising efforts that we put forth to them. And in the past, I know for last year for Iceland, we easily raised, well, not easily, but we raised over, you know, $3,000, almost $4,000. Various students worked various events and each one of them took home a different amount. But it's their effort of fundraising that, of course, allows them to take home and put forth to their trip, you know, as much as they want to work. And we, of course, would offer that again for this trip and for every trip that we've given. So I'll let Mandy speak.
So I went on the Iceland trip last February, and I will be going on the Belize trip in April. And Peru sounds like an amazing experience and opportunity to travel. And Iceland really made me want to travel the world and see new things and get new experiences.
Thank you. Committee members. Discussion of this trip or motions? Ms. Badger.
I think I'm interested in learning a little bit more about this scholarship opportunity that you're talking about, because, I mean, we've mentioned it, a couple people have mentioned that it's, I mean, it's $3,000. That's a lot of money. I mean, this is a, like, for me, it would be a dream trip. I'm like, ready, I'm like, ready to give you my $3,000. I know, I'd like to go back. I went to Iceland, I'll check that one off. But, you know, this is amazing. And it's one of those trips that I'm always looking at, trying to find like a good deal on myself. And it is expensive to go to Peru and to go to Machu Picchu because it is that, the hike and all those pieces involved, it's very hard to get to. So I guess the scholarship aspect is, would be really, really important for this trip, more so than any other, just to make sure it's feasible for everyone who wanted to go.
Of course. So this is something that we're working with the travel company, EF, and they will be providing us a stipend that we'll be able to, with all the logistics arranged, so that we can have students apply for it. So we're expecting about $1,000 to be able to go towards one of these students, which would minimize by at least a third of their travel expenses. And if they work with our different fundraisers, that would keep us an incentive for them to be successful and be able to pace it out and have some good saving money skills as well, so they can actually afford and be able to go with us on this trip.
How early do they know about that scholarship? Because that could always make or break a decision, depending on money.
So the great thing is that as soon as the students enroll, we'll be able to begin the application process. And in the past, our programs have been filled very quickly. So when we first offered our first field trip, we had only 22 students. But for the most recent ones, we've been capping them right after the first or two weeks. So once we have students enrolled, we'll be able to have them apply, given that opportunity, which we'll be announcing during our recruiting meeting. And that will give us a chance for, as a board of this scholarship, to be able to delegate and decide who would be receiving.
Ms. Haywood.
So when you say delegate and decide, so is it, how many students would have the opportunity to have that scholarship?
We were deciding, I was speaking with our principal of the different opportunities that we could do. We could give the grand sum of $1,000 to one student specifically. Or we could give it to two students, two different amounts as well. So they'll depend possibly on also the interest and the number of applicants and their desire.
Okay. So it is just one scholarship.
In your presentation, three or four times, both of you mentioned how important fundraising is, because we all know, you know, we know, that we are beginning to price ourselves too high. And I'm not addressing this trip personally, but I'm beginning to get concerned that there is a small group of students in the Plymouth Public School systems who can go to Iceland, who can go to Peru because their families can afford it. What concerns me is that group of students who look at those students who can go and long for the wish that they could go. And there's no way their parents are going to come up with that kind of money. So something over $3,000 really concerns me personally for that reason. But let me go beyond that, because I think, and I began to dialogue this with central office and some committee members, we're going to, if we want to do global education, and we do, it's a high priority in this district. It's one of our best places. We're going to have to develop means other than a $1,000 scholarship on a $3,000 trip for one child. Or two $500 scholarships. And when you went to Iceland, I think you said before, you got one scholarship and you raised $4,000. That was divided among a bunch of kids. It doesn't seem to me, as these prices go up, that we, we're excluding too many kids. So back to my point. My point is, we have to figure out a way, I'm just going to use the word GoFundMe because I don't know any other word, but of course, it wouldn't be GoFundMe. But I think we got to figure a way where, where community members can contribute. I would make a contribution to a fund here in Plymouth so that when you do a trip like this, there's money sitting there, as opposed to, from a private vendor, a $1,000 scholarship. So you can tell from my tone of my voice, I am so concerned about the price of this trip and the fact that it's excluding so many kids. I'm not even sure I'm going to vote for it for that reason.
I completely understand your concern. And that's one of the reasons why we've been working so hard to try to make it available to our students. And that we have had students who have approached us and who have been able to raise those funds by making those monthly payments. Because by working with the travel company, we are able to give them the lowest price possible. They would never be able to even consider those opportunities if we weren't giving them these in high school. There are students who, once they leave high school, they would probably not even have a chance to leave their home state. And by having that first foot out of the door, we are providing them a little more what is out there for them. And I think that's just the beginning, by opening their eyes and being able to see what's out there. And by providing this opportunity for them to actually see that they can reach those funds by our help and being able to create a page where they can actually, through the vendor's website, they can have all their family, friends, and they can advocate for themselves by having members in the community, such as yourself, help them and achieve those desired dreams.
Ms. Hunt.
Again, this is kind of a little side thing, but I want to put it in your, and I know Dr. Campbell and I recently talked about this. When I was in high school, we had AFS, which was American Field Service. It's an exchange student program. We had lots of kids in the school that would do a whole year. I had a girl live with me for a year. I was an exchange student through AFS. I lived in Turkey. We also had an AFS club, which is what gave me, like you said, you've got that desire now to travel and see everything you can. And that's what instilled that, you know, my four years of school, that's all I wanted to do was be an exchange student. And you don't hear so much about our kids wanting to go away for long periods of time like that. We talk about kids coming here. And I've actually reached out to AFS because it's still very, very active in Duxbury and other districts. And one of the things, and again, this is another conversation, is one of the big things is they need an advisor. They would need a teacher advisor. But one other thing that we also used to do is short-term exchanges. So we would go for a week. I spent a week in Hunter College High School in New York City. Went to school, lived with, I lived in a loft in Soho. It was, it was not an international experience, but it was for maybe even the kid that can't afford something like that. And we went, maybe 20 of us went together. I also spent a week in Pennsylvania. And then we did the reverse. So it's just something that, again, I would vote for. I will always support your trips. But this is just something to think about, maybe if you talk about it with the teachers, if anybody wants to talk more about me, with me or Mr. Campbell about it. It changed my life, and I still am close to a lot of these students. So, but it is, it is more affordable if you do these short-term exchanges. And then they can go to school for a couple of days, they can live with a different family, they see a little bit. And it's just a week. And it's something you can take a bus to. So just, I'm just kind of throwing it out there too, that that might be an opportunity for some of these kids that can't afford the $3,000 price tag.
Dr. Campbell.
Just to support everything that's been said, I think these are very valuable opportunities for our students. And I agree with Dr. Sorenson that there are some students that may not even consider it. Because once they see that cost, they automatically think it's prohibitive. So I think it's our responsibility to let them know that there is hope and there's a pathway to do that. And I think we need to do everything we can in our power to try to bring that cost down as much as possible. I mean, EF will certainly take them up for their scholarship because that's part of the contractual agreement, that, you know, that they're making money off of this trip. And if they want to give us money, we'll take it to support that. But I think as a district, not that we have to budget something like this, but we do have mechanisms in place. We talk about exchanges. We currently have students that come here and do short-term exchanges. We have students that have come here from China. So we have some opportunities, I think, that we can look at internally and create like a strategic approach. Because this is, this has developed a lot in the last five, six years. As we know, we go to Spain, we go to France, we have Milan, Italy, we have the Dominican service trips, you name it. We have a lot of opportunities for our kids. And we want to make sure that whether it's service or exchange or travel, they're all important, they all serve a different purpose. But there's growth in that for these kids. We want to make sure that all of our kids have an opportunity, whether it's $3,000 or even $1,100, because sometimes that's prohibitive too, which is a very inexpensive trip. But that's prohibitive. So what can we do as a school department to help shape that and to create systems, as you were saying, Dr. Sorenson, so we can bring that cost down? And as these trips come before us, we can help to support those students and come up with a plan to address those needs. But just making sure that it's crystal clear to students, as these trips get approved by this board, that, you know, there is an opportunity for you to go. Fundraising is important for them to get involved. I think any, even a student who can afford, whose family could afford it, I think it's important that they're involved in some way. I think it's a life lesson. But more importantly, for those students whose families really can't afford that, because we know there's a lot, that we come up with a way of communicating that to them, that there is an opportunity, don't, you know, don't give up hope on this, and we'll work with you because we have a system in place that's going to help to subsidize that.
I want to follow that point. On Saturday... I want, I want to follow that point. On Saturday, I think it's Saturday, the marching band leaves for UK on Saturday. I know two families, two students in the marching band, not two different families, but who wanted to go, and wanted to go, and wanted to go, but the family could not afford it. School department stepped up, and talked to, talked to sponsors, people in the community, and money came through. And those two kids are going on Saturday, and I happened to bump into one of them downtown, and it was just an amazing experience. Gives me chills to think that they, they originally thought, so that's my problem with this trip, it's three thousand dollars. You know, it's hard to come up with three thousand dollars. All right, I've said my piece.
I think what's been discussed right here is perfect to why we have students here. Do you, do you feel that, if you don't mind me asking a question through the chair, I know that you're go, I know she's going, but it's not a question about her. My question is, do you feel that your classmates and people who, I mean, obviously you may not know who can afford what, or who can, but do you feel like when these trips are posted, do, do your classmates who maybe couldn't afford, or is there a thought among everybody of whether or not they can go to Peru, or they can go to Milan, like you're going, regardless of whether your family can actually afford it?
So, I know, I'm also going to Spain, and I know for that trip, we're doing, like we planned out a lot of fundraising right from the start. So like, the price wasn't quite as expensive as this, but it like, we, like, the first meeting we had, we listed things that we could like do. I feel like some people are kind of like pushed away, they feel like they can't sign up. But I feel like if it's advertised more, that there's more scholarships, and that there's more ways that they will be able to afford it, that they'll definitely sign up. Because I know a lot of kids in my school are always interested, they always say that they're interested in like going to these trips, because they're like, they're so good to experience a different culture. And I know I'm excited to travel and be able to do that. So I feel like if they know that it's, that they're welcome to sign up, and that there'll be options for them to fundraise, and to raise the money that they need, I think people will sign up.
You just need to do a better job.
Well, I guess we have some work to do as a, as a district for future trips. Perhaps we can't do it for this trip, but we really have to figure out some way to, as you say, these, to encourage these other children, to, these other students to sign up. Okay, any other questions? The floor's open for a motion. Ms. Hunt?
I move that we approve the trip to Peru.
Are we doing this electronically, or are we?
Yes, it's back. Rebooted.
Okay, do we have a second?
Well.
Seems to be working.
It looks it.
It says under discussion.
So, Ms. Badger's a second. Any, any other discussion or questions on this? Okay, we'll take the vote. Waiting on one more. It looks like everybody voted in favor. Thank you. Do your best with fundraising, fundraising, please.
If you need another chaperone, I'm here for you. I'll pay, I don't care. I can't pay double. I work for the state.
Thank you. Ms. Frye, can we have an update on this? Well, you know, before you speak, I'll make a comment on the superintendent search. I went to both parent meetings, and the contributions of the meetings that I went to, the parents were pretty astute. I want to share with the committee, two, a lot of, a lot of repetition of what, what the, the parents felt they needed in a superintendent, but here's two that sort of were different. One parent said that she, the, the superintendent that we hire should have a record, a record of big, I can't read my own writing here, big institution, institutional change. In other words, just not coasting along, but proven, proven, proven peddling for change. And another, and another parent spoke very much about the need for the superintendent to have middle school experience. You know, I just want to add that. Ms. Frye?
Definitely. Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. We have had the parent meetings, they were well-attended. We also, we've had three staff meetings as well up to this point. We have two more this week, after school tomorrow and Thursday. What we're in the process of working on to get to you folks is a draft of the parent survey that will go out electronically. I know a lot of people have approached me in the community, they couldn't make the nights, but they'd like to still give some feedback. And what our goal is, we spoke briefly about it this morning, is to take, a lot of people would like to see the feedback we're getting, and, you know, as a, kind of as a document. So we're looking as part of our, creating a brochure for the position, which we would do anyway, but also kind of a document of what the community stakeholders have shared with us as priorities in the community. So Ms. Grimes and I are gonna work closely with Emily Goonan on that, and we, December will be a big month to get all that. And then I think that will inform the, if any changes need to be made to the job description, which again, was from 2008. And then we're looking to post in mid-January. We're still on our timeline, it's still going well, so.
Committee members with questions? Ms. Badger.
Did you give a date, like when we can expect it? I don't know. I know that I will encourage the people in my Zoom classes and everybody, just to answer, like to answer this. I think, because a lot of people aren't gonna see it on social media, and they're gonna see it in their email, but they might delete it, you know, you can pound, or people I'm talking about in the community, even at the farmer's table, you know, just getting it.
Definitely. We'll let you know that. Once we, I want to make sure it's complete first. And it's gonna be technology savvy, you know, it'll be an easy document to work through. But also, we'll do an all-call. I did that for the parent meetings as well. So I'll do an all-call, as well as an email, as well as social media. So we'll get it out there, we'll work with Mr. Harbert, who's still in the back, to make sure we get some more press in the local paper. I know how to find him very easily. So we'll do that, but we'll really market it as well. So, but a lot of people have approached me and said that's, you're able to do that, and they're very happy about getting a paper survey as well, electronic, so.
Any other questions on that item? Okay. Moving to the next item, which is the, the beginning, the beginning of our discussion on the consolidation proposal. Mr. Montron, you can come to the table. And let me say a couple of things to the committee about my expectation with this particular agenda item. This particular agenda item, as you know, comes to us from, from the select board as a proposal, a proposal for the school department to take over their facilities management. It is a very, very complex matter. It will probably require discussions at three or four future school committee meetings before we are even ready to take a vote. It's complex on a number of levels. Let me just give you a couple of, a couple of just overviews of those levels. Obviously, the first one is, we, we're reading, and you will get, you have a package here this evening that Peg will give you. We are reading that many of the buildings that the town of Plymouth wants us to take over are in serious need of repair. And Mr. Montron might be able to address that in just a moment. So before we can sign on, we have to know what we're signing on to. The second level of complexity is our budget. This is an unprecedented request in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Never before has the school department taken over town facilities. It's always gone the other way around. So when we, when we called the Department of Education, asking them how to structure our budget, if we were to take this on, they don't have an answer for us yet. So we have to wait on how our budget would be structured if we took this on, because if it affected our per pupil cost, that would be an unfair advantage, because we'd have a high per pupil cost, but our chapter 70 money would be higher. So we would have to figure out a way to have two separate budgets. But we don't have this information back from the department yet. And I, at some point, Ms. Frye will probably, Assistant Superintendent Frye will probably talk to us about, about contractual matters. So it is a complicated matter, that we're gonna have to discuss all of these issues, and then eventually take a vote on it. So, having said that, Dr. Campbell.
Yes, thank you. So as Dr. Sorenson said, you know that the select board has expressed some interest in exploring the possibilities consolidating. So this evening, Ms. Grimes will be providing you a packet of information that you can look over. And as Dr. Sorenson said, this will take some time for you to make an educated decision. So Mr. Montron's here to speak about some of the history. You have the minutes of the 2010, 2011 consolidation committee meetings in those packets. Mr. Costin is also available to speak to, in terms of the regulations and the, the conditions and the challenges that something like this would, would present, as Dr. Sorenson has already said. And then, you know, there's some other related documents in that packet for you to look at in terms of materials related to town buildings and, and, and whatnot. So I don't know if, Mr. Montron, if you'd like to speak at this time?
I would like to speak to your, your research so far on this matter.
Good evening. I, I, like I've said before, I've been around too long, I guess. Consolidation has been a discussion in this town since the mid-'70s. The first consolidation talks were myself, and then Superintendent Sidman, and the DPW, and the town manager at the time. So we're going back quite a ways. Most recently, in 2010, there were more discussions about consolidation with a town, town study group. I want to say that it was a consolidation committee, and I want to say that it was a committee of town meeting. The committee asked me back then to give an outline of what it is we have for facilities in the schools, and how we ran our operations with facilities, with vehicles, with everything custodial. I gave them a report back then, I believe you have it in your packet, detailing exactly what we had for staff, buildings, equipment, square footage. I said then, at the time, that, and I'll quote, "Given the, given the size of our workforce and the magnitude of our services required, we're stretching our resources to the maximum on the school side." Nothing's changed. Nothing's changed. When I look at the request from the town, my feeling is that the town is looking to consolidate services, mainly because we have tradespeople, skilled tradespeople, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, HVAC technicians that could help greatly with their maintenance of their buildings. Our tradespeople have more than enough to do. We could use more. We could use more tradespeople to take care of what we have. To take on the town and use the same numbers of people is not gonna cut it. No matter what the town decides to do for consolidation of services, as Dr. Sorenson pointed out, this is completely reversed of how it's typically done. Typically, you would be taking school department facilities, and they would become a department of the town. Whoever's in charge of that department would have a dotted line service to the superintendent of schools. That's the way it's been set up in a number of towns. Andover, Wilmington, Cava, Milton, Georgetown, Tibbity, Wellesley, Beverly, Shrewsbury, they've all done it. There were a lot of other things that I, when I look at this, and believe me, I haven't spent a lot of time with their reports, but in looking at it, there are, there are issues with many of the town buildings and the maintenance. Dr. Sorenson's been around quite a while, too, and I'm sure you remember back when we had quite a bit of deferred maintenance ourselves. It's taken us a long time to work out of that hole. We're finally above boards and moving in the right direction, but it's taken a lot of years, a lot of capital investment, but we've managed to get there. The town needs to do the same. The town's facility maintenance department is about two years old. They're going through some growing pains. They're learning what needs to be done and how to do it. They did have a report that was done by Mr. Watkins and Mr. Doherty, the, the facilities manager and the operations manager for the town. If you look at that study, it, it basically outlines that over the next three years, they've got a lot to do to get their buildings up to shape. Even in consolidation, what I've seen from the town manager's report was that they would like the schools to take over the buildings, and then the town would take over waste and, and snow plowing. Well.
Sorry.
Wow. From my point of view, if, if you're going to do something like that, facilities is vertical construction, systems, and components of a building. It's everything within the building. Everything else beyond the doors of the building would be other departments, whether it's DPW, trees, forestry, parks, whoever. They would take care of your wastewater facilities, your domestic wells, your grounds, maintenance, fields, vehicle maintenance, snow plowing, trash removal. There's a lot to think about. It's not a, it's not a small conversation. And I'm not sure if we're rushing a little bit too fast down this road. I know that when I saw the selectmen's meeting, it was thought that they would be making a decision by January, first and second week in January. My own personal belief is that that's a lot to get accomplished in that short period of time. And if there's anything I can, you know, staff-wise, we have issues where we have unions, they have unions, even though we have the same job titles, they're different unions, they're different pay scales. We, we have other issues that if we were to do that, and we lose our maintenance custodial floaters on the school side, then how do schools cover those absences of custodians? Because those are the people we use to cover those absences. And of course, we've got the great 85-page complaint that's been filed with the town, that, not sure where that's going, or what the outcome's gonna be.
Ms. Badger.
I guess my question, I have, I have a handful of questions floating in right, right now. But from what I'm hearing is, the three main topics that we need to discuss long-term are legal, legal issues, whether we can, what we can and how we can by statute. We've got economic, like budget, all those deals, and then we have staffing, correct? The three areas? So, and then, just off of what you've said, so when, when, when you mentioned that the town at one point, obviously, was behind on maintenance, how many years do you think it took us to take our buildings, which is not to the level that these buildings are, to get there?
We're still working on it.
Okay. And, and when do we really start doing that?
Capitol LA started, if my memory serves me right, back in the mid-'80s.
Okay, so that's a long.
Nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven.
Yeah.
So like my life, okay. So that's a long, that's a long, that's a long time to be able to then take these buildings on top of ours and maintain our buildings. Okay. So now, now, and you mentioned some other towns who have gone the other direction. Do we have towns that are comparable to us on that list? I guess I'm not, I don't know.
It's not so much the other direction. It's most districts would go from town, from school to town, not town to school. I don't know any, any municipality in the state that went that way.
No, I, but what I'm wondering is if those towns on the list are comparable to the fact that we have so many facilities within the school, and then so many within the town, is there, do we have any examples to look at, even though it's the reverse way?
There's some, there's some big ones in there.
Okay, so somebody that we can.
Andover is a huge operation.
Andover is a huge town, okay.
Okay, and I worked very closely a few years back with the facilities director in Andover, Joe Pianadosi. Joe was, Joe was there to do the consolidation.
Okay.
But it meant creating a completely new department. It wasn't so much that it was a department of the DPW, the DPW was a department of him.
Okay.
In Andover, that department runs parks, forestry.
Everything.
Everything. Okay, but they have the infrastructure to do it, they have the department makeup to do it.
Yep.
You know, Andover, I want to say his office staff is probably 15 people.
Wow.
Okay, that's how many people it takes to, to divvy up that size of an operation.
That's an interesting observation. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I didn't know if you were.
I find those are my basic things, main ones.
Um, I guess I just.
I guess I just wanted to ask the question. So in the previous consolidation talks, the ones in the 1970s and this, this 20, 2010 to 2011, was it, was the consideration the same as what we're discussing now, this town to school?
No, back then, I believe it was actually the opposite.
The opposite.
Actually, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Okay.
It was the opposite.
This is, what's going on now is not consolidation. What's going on now is let's give the school our, our buildings.
Yes.
And then also, what was the outcome? It looks like in this last meeting from the consolidation committee minutes was to actually create a new consolidation committee. And did that not go through or did we end with that?
I, I hadn't looked at a lot of this stuff in a lot of years.
Yeah, no, so I'm just saying like...
When I was looking at a lot of these notes from the consolidation committee and I saw a lot of talk in there about finances, IT, some on buildings, but very little. I think it was, it was really overwhelming for those committees. You know, they meant well, they were trying to do something good, but it got so big that it just kind of drifted off to the side and it never really came to any real conclusions.
Yeah, that's what it appears.
Right, but both consolidation committees, the one in the '80s and the one just 10 years ago, didn't come to any real conclusions.
No.
No. And it looked like they...
I think, I still believe, and many of us still believe in consolidation, you know, very simplistic is, you know, the town has a painter and we have a painter. Maybe we can end with 1.5 FTEs instead of two FTEs. That's consolidation, but this just doesn't feel like consolidation to me.
Well, in, in the, in the last, when I prepared that letter to the consolidation committee, my, my other item that I tried to get across to them that is on my level, on my level of management, we already do consolidation. If the town needs a craftsman, you know, we had an issue with the fire department roof. They brought in a trailer for, for dispatch and living space. My electricians went over and wired it up. My plumber went over and plumbed it. I had a tree fall across the roadway at Indian Brook last Friday afternoon. The tree department was right there to chop it up and get it out of the roadway. We have that.
We have that now.
All I, all it is, is we pick up a phone and talk to each other and say, "I need," and if somebody else can help, they do. Not that I have the manpower to go through and say, you know, "I, I, I need to redo the entire HVAC system at XYZ building." No, I don't have those kind of resources. But I mean, if it's to help somebody get something up and running, we do it. You know, when we were having graduation at Memorial Hall years back and the duct work fell the night before graduation. Trust me, everybody in town was there working on it, but we got it up and running that night. You know, we had the tree department sitting there doing rigging to get up to it and, you know, HVAC tech's up there trying to put it together.
I, I think it's just that there's a need on, on one end for this to be more formalized as opposed to...
Yeah.
Yeah, assisting.
But there's so many layers.
Yes.
Ms. Hunt.
My, my question is just, I've like read this law a million times trying to figure out between this and the letter we sent, because it says that it has to be a vote by the school committee and town meeting. The letter we sent said that the board of selectmen needs to vote it. So I'm just, it doesn't match up, so I'm just curious if anybody can clarify that.
Oh, the law.
This, this law doesn't say anything about the selectmen, but the letter that Melissa sent us does say that she's asking us to give the selectmen power to approve it.
It does.
That's what it, that says that she, they want us to make a motion for the selectmen to vote on it? I don't understand that at all, so I don't know if it's just the letters not written.
I don't have an answer.
The law says that it counts.
The town, the town meeting.
Mr. Costin can address that.
Thank you, if I can, just a couple of comments. Ms. Hunt, to your question, the last consolidation committee, which both Mr. Montron and myself were on, they, the conclusion, or I should say, was supposed to be a report to the town meeting. I don't recall that happening and I think part of the, the design was so that could be part of making a motion, this is what we should do and the town authorizing it, the selectmen. The school committee has the ultimate authority, there's, there's no question on that, but I would believe this, this timeline as proposed would not work.
No.
It wouldn't, wouldn't hit a number of, of gates that need to be addressed. And if I could, just a couple of quick comments. I did speak with the associate commissioner from the Department of Education and they are not aware, he is not aware of any, any school taking over a town for a number of reasons, for maintenance. And I can, I can go on and on, but the accounting would be a nightmare. The, the per pupil costs, as Dr. Sorensen addressed, it, it doesn't really, it doesn't really warrant that type of relationship without, we want to add some staff to keep track of all that. We have to bill our jobs totally differently because of net school spending and per pupil costs. So there's a lot of issues there. And as far as towns taking over, the reason, and in my, in my experience, I've been, you know, involved in this for, school districts for 40 years now, unfortunately 40 years, Arthur and I are getting up there. I've seen this happen a number of times and the reason is that the town has had the resources, the expertise, the staff, the equipment to help the school out and to take the, the school districts over to do a better job. I would really propose that instead of consolidation, since I, you know, I'm the business administrator, let's look at it as a business model. This, this would be a merger. So if you were going into a merger, you would really want two, two companies or two organizations that have strength and duplicate resources.
Yes.
So that you're able to possibly eliminate or capitalize on those resources. In this particular situation, the school department has most of the, the staff and the resources to be able to get certain things done. If we were to take over another partner, we would not have enough staff to do what we need to do in the buildings. So if anyone thinks that you're going to save money by a merger like this, you're either going to sacrifice quality or you're going to have to add resources. And that would be staff, money, equipment to bring the town buildings up to the school level, or the school buildings would have to possibly suffer with the existing staff that we have.
Mr. Morgan.
Does the town have something to offer to us, like we have to offer, that we have the craftsmen and whatnot? Are they proposing they have something to bring to the table? Snow removal. But they already do that already, don't they?
No, we do it.
Oh, no, no.
But they do help us though occasionally, right?
They help us if we, we had a storm a few years ago that our trucks were actually too small. You've got so much snow so fast.
I remember that, yeah, 2017.
So we needed a bunch of loaders.
2017.
The town had the loaders because they had already contracted them. When they were done with all the town work, they came and opened up the school's floors.
So I'm going to comment on that because I read in some of the paperwork you have here that the town buildings probably need quickly about $10 million and if that's not taken care of, it'll require $40 million. I do not think that we have $10 million worth of snow removal in any given year.
Well, the, the facility condition report for the town looked at 28 buildings. This is a report that was done by EMG Corporation in conjunction with Dude Solutions, which is the town's version of school do. They looked at 28 of the facilities. There's 93 immediate items of concern and the total cost is $2,496.53. That's just the immediate. It's a lot of work and a lot of buildings to take that on at this point. I don't know how much of this is really immediate because when I look at some of the line items, I'm not sure how pressing they really are because these reports tend to be interpretive. So you'd have to go through each one of these and look at them. I don't, I haven't been in most of these buildings, so I don't really know what the condition is.
Ms. Hunt.
But there's also health issues and lawsuits involved in some of these buildings.
We don't take that.
Which that, we'd be taking the responsibility to fix those and it's just not, that's a lot, it's a lot to be responsible for and it seems like it's, there's new things coming up all the time. So that makes me nervous. The situation is just so bad right now, just to pass it off to us.
Ms. Badger.
Is there an MSBA version for like a town? I'm just, I'm just thinking because they do hold the certain standards and I just didn't know if there's some sort of rescue. I mean, not that we need rescue, but if the buildings are in the current condition they're in, and I have not had a chance to read everything in this packet, but I, I mean, it's like not a bail, bailout's the wrong word, but it's almost like we need a little bit more help from the state in order to get out from where we are. And I just don't know if there's something like that available.
I don't know, it's a good question.
Or would then... Yeah, and then would our, if we took it, would those buildings then be subject to MSBA because they were our property?
No.
Okay, all right, just checking.
School building authority. Very separate.
Trying to answer your question. It's not so much an organization like MSBA.
Yeah.
What the town needs to do is really go through their capital plan. When you really look at the schools, MSBA has given us some funding.
Yes.
On new buildings, on new construction. We've gotten some on some major repairs, but for the most part, it's all been through capital outlay.
Yes.
It's all been through the town and that's really what the, the DPW Building Maintenance Division is trying to get to, is to assess their buildings, to put together a solid capital plan. That's what it is they're trying to do at this point, you know?
I just want to clarify that. I'm reading from a memo about DS Consultants conducted visits of 32 town buildings and I'll skip a sentence and it goes, "Estimated costs for 2020 to 2021 are approximately $10 million. Over the next 10 years, the costs escalate and accumulate to over $42 million." Ms. Hunt.
The other thing too, I think there's some figures in the letter as to how much money is going to be transferred into our budget, but I think it only says this year's budget and that we'd have to rework our budget next year and what happens if there are cuts that have to come down from the town or town meeting decides they're going to cut our budget, what, you know, there's no guarantee that beyond this year, that money is going, going to be there for us.
Sure, we'll be on town meeting.
There's no guarantee. And it's going to be the school asking for more money again, which we said we would not do.
And to address that, you, you cannot put funding for public buildings, non-school buildings, in the school budget. So we would have to have a separate...
Separate budget.
Separate budget that would fall under maybe the school's supervision, but it would have to be town line items. And as such, when I spoke with the Department of Ed, if, for example, Boiler went, you can't transfer $1 of school money into that account to fund a town building. You would have to then go for finance committee transfers, et cetera.
Ms. Heywood.
No, I think Mr. Costin, you know, described this clearly, the fact that this is not a consolidation, this is a merger. And in a merger, you normally have like comparable resources of the two entities that are coming together and that is not what we see here at this point. So, yeah, it's a lot to take in and think of.
So as I said when we started this discussion, this is complex, there are many levels. This is our first volley added this evening. It's going to come back when we have more information and eventually we're going to have to take a position on this proposal. Now, the board, the select board did not vote on this. They just wrote a proposal and sent it over, so they haven't voted on it.
They haven't.
As far as I know, am I correct?
Not aware of anything, no.
So they voted to send the letter?
Send it.
That's basically what it was.
Oh, that's what, they voted to send the proposal, not to support it.
Right.
I see.
So I think when the town...
That's cute.
Well, I think when the town, I watched it and when the town manager brought it up, the chair said, "Since they don't know what we're talking about, we should probably put this in writing and send it to them." And I think those are, I think it was brought up and without, without any discussion with us first.
Ms. Badger.
I'm just wondering how we're going to tackle it or tackle all the issues. Are we going to have like three separate meetings where we talk one about finances and then one about employee issues and union issues and then legal one? I'm just wondering how my brain needs to kind of frame what we're thinking.
You know, I'm in mental health, so I'll throw this back at you. Tell me what you want to do.
As you might have already could tell, I'm a very, I like to take things subject by subject, but if it, obviously they overlap in some respects, so it's hard to like completely stay in one kind of zone, but it would be, I think, helpful to have some people who know more about the law than I do in front of us and, you know, obviously Mr. Costin and his extensive experience with budgeting and things like that.
I can tell you that Dr. Maestis is prepared to address many of these topics when he comes back. Ms. Heywood.
I just think that if, in, you know, in prior dealings, there was a specific committee that was, you know, that took up this particular, what's it called, issue and the fact that now it's an accelerated plan to make this decision does not, it doesn't make, to me, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense that there was, you know, meaningful intention on that end and now on this, it's now accelerated. And what is the difference in this, almost 10 years from this previous last committee? So I don't think that this, I don't...
I think to, one thing to add, I just received a communication that in the 1997 discussion about this, it was truly an article on town meeting floor and the language of it was that forming a committee to see the feasibility of forming a town facility management department to oversee the operation and maintenance of all town facilities. And in the notation, it actually speaks to the cooperation of the school department back in 1997 with, you know, helping with resources. So it's interesting to see that it was a true article at town meeting, just have a study committee to look at it versus a, you know, but again, it was town departmental versus school taking over because of the many logistics with our end.
Mr. Morgan.
I think it might be helpful as well for the town, whether it's the chair of the select board or the town manager to come and give their pitch or presentation to us as to why they think it would be advantageous to the town and the schools for this to happen.
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Hunt.
I think too, to Ms. Badger's point, you know, knowing exactly like what, what's going to happen, I mean, I think there's a whole list of things like, you know, what's going to happen with priority. Their buildings need so much work, so does that mean ours are just going to get, you know, put to the bottom of the list? And then we're going to just be in a cycle? So I think that, and I've been saying this since we started talking about it a year ago, if, if we did merge, you know, who, who takes priority if both the town side and the school side have the same issue or, not the same issue, but equally, you know, who's going to make that call as to who gets taken care of first? I just don't, that just, that's a, that's a thought that kind of concerns me as well, as well as how many people are going to lose their jobs or how many more people are going to be hollowed out, exactly how much it's going to impact us money-wise either way. There's just... There's just way too many questions.
Ms. Badger.
I think to go to Ms. Haywood's point, Mrs. Haywood's point about the committee that was set up, I mean, it wasn't, it was a year ago this time that we sat in a room and we said, okay, let's set up a meeting where we have people of like parts in, within this that we could then sit around a table? Because you could put any of us around a table? And, and I don't know what it takes to keep the school buildings running and beautiful like they are. I don't know what it takes on the town side. So we wanted to put like people together to see what the needs are. But I don't think we, again, we skipped over that. And I think making, that's a fantastic observation that I think that, um, is, you know, we skipped a giant step there by not talking at the employee level to know actually what's going on.
I mean, it's not an action item.
Okay.
It's a discussion. It's a discussion.
Informational item, as we said at the beginning. And we'll continue to have. So just as Mrs. Haywood was just saying, this is not an action item, this is an informational item. We'll continue to have these conversations.
It's going to be on future agendas, agendas. Uh, Mr. Morgan will think about whether or not we want to have a, if and, no, strike that, if when we want to have a member of the board or the town manager here. I think we have to do some more homework.
Yes.
We have to get some more reports back.
Yes, agree.
Yeah.
So we can speak from an informed position. Okay, thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Mask resolutions. Ms. Hunt.
Okay, um, I, I don't know, I mean, I have a copy of the resolutions. Do you want me to just quickly go in the, in the, some of them have amendments. Do you want me to go over those or just tell you what the final was?
Just tell us the final results.
Okay, so every, um, every resolution passed. There weren't any that weren't. Some had some amendments. The one that you authorized me to not vote on was.
Refresh me, which one was that?
That was the teacher, the MTEL.
Okay, right.
A no vote.
So I think the discussion was very similar to the discussion we had here. They actually, um, made a motion to make it two resolutions, which we talked about.
Yeah.
Um, and so both resolutions were, were passed. Um, the first one was amended, um, it was split and the resolution was adopted and then both of them were, both of them were adopted, both sides. But, but it does make a little bit more sense that it, um, that it went that way. But honestly, everything, everything else pretty much got voted on through pretty quickly. Um, there were some things added in here. And actually, if you guys go onto the MASC website, it's right on, you can, you can pull it up right off the front page, or you can take mine, and it says what any of the amendments are. But every, nothing was not passed.
Okay, any questions for, for Ms. Hunt?
Yeah, if you want, if you want more specifics, but I know it's getting late.
Okay, thank you for that report.
Lot on your plate.
Oh, yeah, I know, now I gotta do it, I have to deal with this now.
We have a requirement, uh, to set up, uh, to get on the warrant and for spring town meeting. You want to address that, Dr. Campbell?
Yes, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Costin in a moment, but as you all know, programmatically and fiscally, we're responsible for transporting students that are homeless and, and also foster students, which can be a pretty significant expense. This evening, this is an action item, but, um, you're receiving information relative that requests for town meeting to add through the ESSA, Ever Student Succeeds Act, an article at spring town meeting to, um, an MOU to sign that would allow the town to receive reimbursement for transporting students in foster care. And again, this money would go back to the town, but it would, um, provide some financial relief for, um, this mandate. So Mr. Costin can speak to it more directly.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. A number of, of us, uh, special education directors, business administrators, and, um, guidance personnel attended conferences this, this past, um, past fall. And, um, DCF has, has been able to participate in this program through the Department of Education and Executive Office of Health and Human Services. Uh, the bottom line is that schools in general are experiencing a very costly transportation to transport students who are foster care students from, to their school of origin. And, um, as a result, many schools and representatives have, have looked at ways to minimize the cost for school districts. Just to give you a benchmark, in FY19, Plymouth, uh, spent $284,000 transporting foster care students to schools of origin. So far, um, this year, we've, we've only budgeted $120,000, but we'll exceed that. As you know, we have a lag in our budgeting before we get the actual numbers. So when we see the budget for '21, it'll be $265,000. But this, um, this program has come late. Most school districts have missed fall town meetings. Um, some of them have decided not to go forward on this spring town meeting because what will happen is you're only able to bill for, or bill for reimbursement for anything that occurs after town meeting votes. So for Plymouth, we would only be able to invoice or bill for two to three months' worth of, of service. But it would put us in place for next year to be able to bill for the full amount. What I'm told is that the anticipated reimbursement rate is around 21%. So those funds would go directly to the town. So you're looking at maybe 50, $55,000 that would go back to the town. Candidly, there is a lot of work for the school department to do. There's a reporting tool that we have to, uh, participate in, much like the circuit breaker, which is a lot of work.
Yeah.
But it's something that obviously we're willing to take on for, for the benefit of the town, the school district. Um, makes no sense to not do this. But they are requiring, DCF and, um, DOL are requiring the town meeting authorize the Board of Selectment and the school department to enter into this MOU. The MOU is standard. It was given to us, to everyone that attended, um, and it's across the state. And we have run the, uh, we have presented this situation and for recommendation to our attorneys, and they have drafted up, uh, the accompanying warrant article for town meeting.
So the motion, you're, tell me what the motion is you're looking for from us.
Well, the motion is that I, we're looking for your permission, your authority to submit this before the warrant closes, the annual town meeting warrant closes in December, to be included as a warrant item on behalf of the school committee, by request of the school committee.
You've heard the request. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the, uh, my brain stopped functioning, it's almost 10, I'm, I mean, it's almost.
Motion's on screen.
Motion's written right here.
I don't have it. I showed the summary.
There you go.
Uh, the school committee, uh, that the town add the Every Student Succeeds Act to the spring town meeting so that the attached MOU can be signed and school districts will be able to, our school district will be able to receive the transport, transporting children in foster care through the town.
Did you second that, Mr. Morgan? We have a mesh motion and it's been seconded. Any, any question? Okay, we'll take the vote then, please. Okay, everybody voted in favor. Thank you, Mr. Costin. Is there anything from the committee on unfinished business we have to address this evening? Okay. Is there any new business the committee wants to bring up this evening? Superintendent's report. Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Serenson. A lot to report, but I'll try to be, um, quick. Um, so since our last meeting, we've had, um, both of our high schools have had two fantastic plays that they put on for us. First at Plymouth North High School about a week or so ago, Servant of Two Masters, um, and then The Giver, um, just recently at Plymouth South High School. Both did a fantastic job, and I know some people were in attendance and it was just, um, very, very professional job, um, all around. So congratulations to all involved there, both, um, on stage and behind the scenes. Uh, PCS last Thursday had their literacy expo, which is a great district celebration of literacy. We had programs and events for all ages, community programs, guest speakers. Um, so just want to thank, uh, not only the staff over at PCS, but all the community members and the partners that came out to support that. It was a real, um, celebration of literacy, which started during the day and then concluded in the evening for our families, which was really nice. On November 7th, we had our Veterans Day Assembly at Plymouth North High School, which was a wonderful annual event celebrating and honoring our service women and men. Uh, the band was there, uh, we had students who were performing, um, as well as a video presentation. And of course, our guest speakers who are, um, veterans, um, veterans of, of, um, our military. So that was a wonderful event. We had two assemblies, um, for the, uh, the underclassmen and the upperclassmen at North High School. So it was a, it was a great, a great morning. Um, just want to congratulate Plymouth South High School, as we heard from Alexandra, um, for winning, uh, the game over Milton Friday night, becoming Division Four state champs. So they're off to semifinals, where they'll take on, uh, Tantascua this Saturday at 11:00 AM at Severian. Um, and the winner of that game will move on to Gillette in the Super Bowl and a chance to be Division Four state champ. So really proud of, um, of all those athletes that done a wonderful job and, and all accounts, just a great group of, of athletes all around. So that's great. It was mentioned tonight in Ms. Silva's, um, presentation in terms of CCTE, um, and you'll see in the attachments, I believe, if you have access to that, the enormous amount of donations that we've received, um, for HVAC and related materials, um, tens of thousands of dollars. So there's some letters of appreciation that Ms. Sylvia's, has, um, has passed on to those companies. It's just a great testament to this community and the enormous support that they show to our vocational program. So we couldn't do it without them. So we're really, um, very thankful for that and also the, the new HVAC staff member who has really worked on building those community partnerships. So, um, really excited about that and appreciative. And then lastly, um, budget season is upon us. Last week, Dr. Maestis, Mr. Costin, Mrs. Frye, myself, met with all across the center managers, uh, went through each budget line by line. So we spent several days together and had, had a wonderful time, as we always do when we're together. But in all seriousness, the budget that will be presented to you is a level service budget. So this budget is reflective of what it takes to do business as we currently do it for next fiscal year. So we'll start those budget presentations, will begin on Monday, December 2nd. That's our first meeting. We ask you to, we, we schedule three evenings. Um, in the event that it goes beyond the first evening, I could say in my 12 years here, we've never gone over. I know we have in the past, but I feel confident that, um, that we can do it in one night, but we do ask you to keep in mind that it may take more than one evening. So that's all I have this evening.
Any questions to Dr. Campbell? Mr. Morgan, any, are there any correspondence?
Yes, there is. There's one letter tonight, a thank you letter from Nancy Rozak, a biomed science teacher at Plymouth North, to the President McDonald at the Massachusetts Maritime Academy, uh, for their emergency room design and EMT job training to the biomed students at Plymouth Public Schools.
Okay, thank you for reading that into the record. School fundraising, we have the usual fundraising report in your package. Any committee members with questions about it? Okay. Reports and proposals. Committee members, reports and polls. Ms. Hunt.
Just a few quick things. Um, you know, Ms. Haywood and I had a chance to attend the MASC conference and I think we're probably going to get a chance to report out on it a little bit more. But I just want to mention while Alex is here too, that I had, I had a great opportunity to spend some time with her and Abby and I was completely impressed with their professionalism, how well they spoke. Um, they sat on a panel where they were asked questions with other school committee reps from other towns. And then they also sat at lunch with other adults and had conversations about what we do here, what some ideas are, um, some topics that they might like to talk about in the future. And it was just, it was fantastic and I had a really good time. So thank you for coming and I'm very impressed with both of you guys and, and how well you held yourselves. As always, you guys are amazing. So I just want to mention that really quickly. I was very proud to be with them. Um, at one point, I think I raised my hand and I said, well, they're mine, so let me just help you answer that question. So, um, but yeah, it was great. It was great to spend time with them. And then the DVC met, the Distinguished Visitors Committee met, and, um, I know Peggy's been really involved with the planning this year and it's been amazing. We actually made a comment about how wonderful it's been having her take a really active role in some of the communications. We actually got them on the phone during our meeting. We called Japan. Um, and I kept hearing in the back, Kim Son, Kim Son. But, um, so they're going to come twice next year. So we have to start thinking about that. Um, and we talked twice now about them coming at a time where the kids can come to school. And we're looking at Columbus Day, the week of Columbus Day. So that way, they do have that extra day off to do things with their family, but they'll have some days to go to school too. They really want the kids to go to school. So the kids will probably come there. And then Shishkohama is talking about two other times coming, one for the embarkment ceremony.
The embarkation ceremony in September?
April. April.
Something in April, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. The kickoff is April 24th.
And then there is also going to be something that I guess the DVC is not even 100% sure they're going to have anymore. They're in discussions, but they're thinking about sending, um, the Nana group. I don't know if you guys saw them?
Yes.
So they originally were going to send a drum group, but the, um, sending a drums over here that are made out of animal skins, I guess it's a problem. Bringing them from Japan to here. So I think that they might send the Nana group, which is their in-house, Naomi's kids are in it. It's their in-house, um, dance and song troupe. So that's still in the works. They also really, really, um, they do an international day, which we know about because we've helped with it before every year. Well, this year specifically, they want to do it about Plymouth. So they're going to reach out to the plantation, to the, um, antiquarian society and, um, Pilgrim Hall. Um, and actually, somebody from the plantation might even go there to help with their international day.
Oh, that's a great idea.
So there's a lot, a lot going on and for the DVC, that's like, for the, the stuff that we have coming up, that's like one-tenth of what we have to deal with, is the Japan stuff. But, um, that's, that's coming down the line as well. So we'll, we'll have more conversations, but it was kind of cool to get them. We got Tyler and Tiffany on the phone with us, as well as Mr., you know, Akata and, um, you know, everybody was in the background yelling and it was fun. It's fun to get to talk to them.
Okay, what else do we have? Reports and proposals. Ms. Badger.
Um, just a, I've, the Plymouth Area Collaborative, we had our meeting last week, I think, and we're not meeting again until February, but I forgot the annual report, to bring it with me today, but I will hand that in because I know that is like one of my main responsibilities, hand that over to you. So I'll bring it, I'll send it via email. So we are moving along. Everything looks pretty good financially for the collaborative and we're making some, they're moving to their base out of Pembroke and they're going to be out of, um, the, the Pilgrim, Pilgrim Academy, which will be really nice. We'll be located in Plymouth. Um, and it, it's just going to give a nice opportunity for, to, um, have better working conditions because that build, the hatch building is pretty bad. Um, you sit in there and you, your chair kind of rolls to the side of the wall. So they're really excited about that. That's happening in December and January. So that'll be a big thing for the, the collaborative. And that, we had a Plymouth Public School Alumni Association meeting. Our next meeting will hopefully be maybe towards the end of January, but before that, we're excited and we're going to be doing a, um, January event, hopefully with the help of Cindy Silva, Sylvia. And we are going to, um, work hopefully with some marketing students as well to help build it because right now we are a small team of three to four to five, depending on the day. And so we're really hoping to grow that program. And Ms. Hunt is going to be putting together some t-shirts for us, be able to hopefully sell them at the Thanksgiving Day, um, game and just say simple Plymouth Schools Alumni, I think, Plymouth Alumni.
Yeah, it's changed, changed a little bit since you gave me carte blanche.
But, so we'll have some shirts just to, to raise some money for scholarship as well, just to kind of raise awareness that we have an alumni association.
We'd like to position that, that's, that table as a alumni check-in here kind of thing, like. We'd like to position that table as alumni check-in here kind of thing, like...
Steal your information.
Like if you're an alumni, go check in at the alumni table. And I have some name tags at home, like lots of them. And I was thinking that we could give them to people and they could put class of. And, you know, if people are walking around, I could say a class of whatever, just to have. And I think the class of... My class has some left... I'm not going to say it aloud. My class has leftover shirts that they're willing to actually donate us that say Plymouth Carver that we can sell as well. So...
So some more money and just some...
But we just want it to be like, you know, "Hey alumni, check in at your ta... Go check in at the alumni table."
Yeah.
And then we can have that conversation with them to tell them more about it.
So hopefully that'll...
Looking for volunteers to help me with that.
Yeah, if anybody wants to do that. Also, the safety committee, we don't really talk about it much out here, but I think it's important that we do bring up the fact that, you know, we have all talked that ALIS is hopefully will be rolled out to all of the schools. And they're also working on the revamp of our safety manual, which Chris has been... Dr. Campbell has been doing a lot of work on. So I thought that was important, that we bring that up. And then The Giver was phenomenal, I have to say. I couldn't go to the NOR show, but The Giver was really phenomenal, like always. I, on Friday afternoon, sent an email to Mr. Cable, and I was like, "I need one more ticket. Can I have one more ticket?" And he was like, "You can have a $5 standing room only ticket." And so it's wonderful. I was like, "Well, I can't because the needs to sit..." They needed a seat. But the fact that that has proved that they need to do a third showing, that's what Mr. Cable said. So I think that is... Really speaks volumes to what... How our town is supporting our students and also just the work that they are really producing.
And the reputation.
Yeah. It's amazing. So that's it.
Under reports and proposals, we... I don't think at this point we have anybody signed up to go to the National School Board Conference, which is coming up in the spring.
Well, yeah, actually.
Well, I haven't registered them yet, but Kim and Bedna. That's who I know of as now. So I was holding on to see if there were anyone else.
We have some policy here I want to go over, because I don't even know it. What's the policy here? If you're up for reelection, you cannot go. And if you went the previous year, you cannot go.
Really?
No.
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 That's not policy? Oh, good. Forget that. Okay, good. I thought that was policy.
I think it was just the election.
That would eliminate half of us.
Yeah.
That's why I think we had nobody... All right, okay.
I also...
We just didn't go. So jealous.
Yeah. And I really want to work on the legislative conference. And I think as the legislative chair now for MAS C that I... They should send me. So I'm trying to work on that, too. But if not, I might need to make a choice between the two, and I would probably choose that one. So...
So we usually send three. Is that correct?
We send whoever wants to go. Usually there's not more.
We budgeted for two to three.
All right. All right.
Because when we went, it was me and Margie, right? No, there were four of us that went when we went to Walens. Because Deb Bets went, too.
All right. Okay. I might be able to go. I'll check my schedule. So we got Bedna and we got...
We still have a four-week before we lose the early registration benefit. So I'll check in with you.
Okay. Okay. Moving on. Building Committee.
Yes, we did have a building committee meeting last Thursday. I'll go through it quickly. We had some change orders for the maritime facility. We're a little concerned about the contingency budget there, so we're watching that. The roof chiller replacement at the library is nearing completion. The 1749 courthouse, they encountered... They went up and did some work on the roof and found there's three layers of roofing, which they were surprised about. So that's creating a challenge. The North Plymouth Fire Station is 40% done. And over at the South Russell Street parking deck, they're working on the punchless, and they're working on fixing that retaining wall that collapsed during the heavy rainstorm. And that's my report.
Any questions to Mr. Morgan? All right. Thanks for that report. We have to do the accounts payable and the grants revolving fund warrant. Ms. Hunt.
I keep thinking I have a touchscreen. I don't. I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the reports and accounts payable warrant number S-112119 dated November 21st, 2019, in the amount of $1,133,625.11 as presented.
You've heard the motion. Who's the second? Ms. Badger is the second. Any questions? Okay. Let's vote on that, please. All right. Mine just froze up. Here it goes. All right. Everybody voted in favor on that one. And now the grants and revolving fund warrant.
I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the Grants and Revolving Funds Warrant, number G-112119, dated November 21st, 2019, in the amount of $439,602.76 as presented.
Is there a second? Mr. Morgan is the second. Is there any question on that? Okay. And everybody voted in favor of that. Now we want to do the minutes. We'll start with the minutes of September the 9th. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Badger.
I have... So on page six, where it talks about the Fragment Society donation, I just think... We just need to kind of make a reference. It's the excess left over at the end of the year that needs to be spent out. It looks like we just decided to make one donation to the Plymouth Public Schools. And so I just want to make that clarification.
End of the year.
Yeah.
The end of the year, yes. They can roll it over.
And it's fine. I just want to get that clarification. Thank you.
Bless you.
Bless you.
So that's where that...
That's why it's an automatic.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So with that correction, do I have a motion? Ms. Badger, please.
I move we approve the minutes with the correction as presented.
Are you seconded by? Mr. Morgan, seconded that one. And now we can vote on September the 9th. Okay. Everybody voted in favor of that one. And now we're going to do the minutes of September the 16th. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the September 16th minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is it seconded by? Ms. Hunt. Any questions on September 16th? Okay. Please vote for it, the motion that is. Everybody voted in favor. And now we executive session on Tuesday, September 17th, meeting with the Select Board. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the executive session meetings, minutes on September 17th as presented.
Seconded by Mr. Morgan. Questions? Okay. Please vote. Everybody voted in favor, please. Thank you.
I didn't.
And now we're ready to do September the 17th. No, I just do those?
Yeah.
October 7th.
I think they're in there twice.
That's the one that was...
This is October 7th.
Yeah.
October 7th. My era.
Regular meeting.
Yes.
Regular meeting, October 7th. Mr. Morgan.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for October the 7th.
Thank you. Seconded by? Ms. Hayward is the second. Questions? All right.[1678.48]